You have a lot to cover, so we need to go ahead and get started. And the first thing we have on the agenda, which is very, very important, we're going to swear in our new counselors. So officially, you will now become a part of the team. So I don't, any word from Smart, whether or not he's gonna...
He was just talking to Ronnie a minute ago.
Oh, okay.
And he's getting his iPad set up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he, he'll probably jump on here shortly.
Okay, well, we are going to do the swearing in. This is exciting. I'm excited. Of course, I'm excited today. I just feel...
A great day, Mayor. It's a great day.
It's a perfect day to swear in our new counselors.
Yes, it is.
It's a feel-good day. So Mike is going to handle the swearing in. And of course, being virtual, I think it's going to work out as best we can. So do you want to wait for Smart or you want to go ahead and just dive in?
I'd say we just kind of start diving in. Hopefully, he'll jump on and in the process here, we'll make it there.
Okay.
All right, so let's start with Counselor Thompson. How are you doing this evening, Counselor Thompson? You're muted.
Trying to get my audience members in here.
Oh, hey.
You have a whole crowd back there, boy.
All right, sweet. We got some witnesses here.
All right, how you guys doing back there?
We're doing great.
Okay, no booing, okay?
All right, Counselor Thompson, can I have you raise your right hand and repeat after me? All right, I state your name.
I, Shawna Thompson.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will, to the best of my ability.
That I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully fulfill and discharge the duties of the office.
Faithfully fulfill and discharge the duties of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I've been elected.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The laws of the state of Oregon.
The laws of the state of Oregon.
And the ordinances of the city of King City.
And the ordinances of the city of King City.
Congratulations, Counselor Thompson. All right, Counselor Moore, you're up. Where's your witness crowd?
I promised off-camera attendance. Oh, do you want to look?
Ah, there we go. All right, we had some witnesses. All right, Kate, may I have you raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me? I state your name.
I, Kate Moore.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will, to the best of my ability.
That I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully fulfill and discharge the duties of the office.
Faithfully fulfill and discharge the duties of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The laws of the state of Oregon.
The laws of the state of Oregon.
And the ordinances of the city of King City.
And the ordinances of the city of King City.
Congratulations, Counselor Moore.
Woo, thank you everyone.
Luckily, I was unmuted.
Congrats, Kate.
We still have Counselor O'Toole to swear in, but I guess we'll have to hit him when he jumps on.
Okay.
So we can progress if you'd like.
Okay, just real quickly, a few words to our new team members. I am so thrilled and happy to have you guys on this team. The reality of it is, we are all here for the very same reason, that we want to do everything we can to make the residents of King City and the city itself the best it can be. We are here to support every resident of King City and beyond, because there are going to be some new members coming up before long. And we want to make sure that everybody understands that that's the only reason we are here, is to make sure that we support the residents of King City. What do we want King City to be? We want it to be safe. We want it to be prosperous. And we want it to be a welcoming community. And I know that's why you guys are on board. I know that's why you're here. And I am super excited about having you. So thank you for joining us. I appreciate it very much. The work now begins, so thanks again. You guys want to give a speech?
I just want to say thank you to everyone who supported me and the people who voted for me. And hopefully, if I run again, I'll have more people voting for me. Because I've gotten to know my neighbors a little bit more. Thank you.
All right, congratulations, Kate.
Thanks, everyone. Yeah, thanks, Mayor, for those nice words. And I'm looking forward to serving alongside all of you. And welcome, Kate, to the council. And this is going to be a great year. I'm really looking forward to it.
I like that. And we're going to make sure that we do our part. Okay, well, we don't have Smart, so you want to just move forward?
Yeah, so I just heard from him. He's just having a little trouble connecting. He's trying to get on right now, but...
Okay.
He's tired.
We'll catch him on the rebound there. Okay, and the way we begin all council meetings is with a moment of silence. We've got a lot to be thankful for, but at the same time, we have a lot to be concerned about. The pandemic is still front and center, and we're trying our best to manage through it. We have done well as a city, I believe. We haven't had any major outbreaks or anything related to King City, but at the same time, it has become painfully aware that there is a lot of hatred in this country that is going to have to be dealt with. And we have to do everything we can to make it clear that it won't be tolerated in King City, that we're all in this together and we're going to love one another to the best of our ability. So with that being said, let's do a moment of silence for those people who were lost in the insurrection. And, you know, to make sure that we know that we want this to be a better country than it is, has been. So... Okay, thank you, everybody. Let's call the meeting to order. Mike, want to do roll call?
Sure thing, Mayor. Counselor Fender. Counselor Platt.
Here.
Counselor Moore.
Here.
Counselor Thompson.
Here.
Counselor Paulson.
Here.
I have Counselor O'Toole having difficulty. And then Mayor Gibson.
Here.
All right. They all accounted for.
Okay, we have, thanks for that, Mike, approval of minutes from May 13th, 2020, and also May, November 18th, 2020.
I move approval of the minutes from May 13th, 2020, and the minutes from November 18th, 2020.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 There you go. So we know, you can wave. Okay, all right, sounds good. Thank you. Okay, we'll move right along and dive in. We have a special presentation from Washington County. It is the representative online.
Mayor, before we go into that, Gwen is on. I saw her chime in.
Okay, there she is, yeah.
But we just had Counselor O'Toole log in.
Oh, okay.
So Smart, can you log on? Can you unmute? You need your video.
Can you hear me now?
Yep. Can you turn on your video?
Yeah, that's crashing it. When I turn it on, it crashes it. So I don't know. I'm trying to figure that out.
Okay, well, if you want to just repeat after me, we'll swear you in. Gwen, if you don't mind just hanging on for one second, we'll get you in here. Thank you. And Smart, you just raise your right hand and repeat after me for me, will you? Say, I state your name.
I, Smart O'Toole.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will, to the best of my ability.
That I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully fulfill and discharge.
Legally fulfill and discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
To which I've been elected.
To which I've been elected.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The laws of the state of Oregon.
The laws of the state of Oregon.
And the ordinances of the city of King City.
And the ordinances of the city of King City.
Congratulations, Counselor O'Toole.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mike. Sorry about the technical difficulties I'm having. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I'll take it over to you.
Okay, welcome, Smart, and congratulations on another term. We're very proud of everything that everybody is doing, and our team is now complete, so...
Thank you, Mayor Gibson, and thank you, everyone. I really appreciate the opportunity to continue serving King City with this great team here. So I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Okay, Smart, thank you so much. Okay, we'll move on. Let's see, Gwen? Ashcombe? Are you there, Gwen?
Yes, I am here.
Okay, well, thank you so much for joining us. We're looking forward to your presentation. And it's a very important topic, preventing youth access to tobacco.
Ronnie, can we pass the controls over to Gwen?
I think I can just push the share screen. Want me to go ahead and try?
Yeah, let me just get mine on.
Oh, okay, just a second here. Okay. You can all see this?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so yes, my name's Gwen Ashcombe. I'm the Tobacco Prevention Coordinator with Washington County Public Health. And I want to talk to you today about some, a proposal that we are looking at doing for Washington County and seeing, gauging your interest and want to participate in those efforts. So we're going to talk about some evidence-based strategies that we know have worked and are currently in progress for preventing youth access to tobacco. A little bit of the landscape, what it kind of looks like across Washington County, a little bit of data, and then where we are now. And I will try to move through this relatively quickly, but if there's any questions or anything, please let me know. And we'll have time at the end, too, to talk a little more. And these are the strategies that we know work. So they're evidence-based. We know they work to prevent youth access. We've been able in Oregon to do two things. So we've been able to raise the purchasing age from 18 to 21. That was wonderful. We know that 90% of our smokers start before the age of 18, 95% by the age of 21, and 99% by the age of 26. So delaying access to products can hopefully delay a future addiction to these products. We also just recently, in November, passed the tobacco tax. That included the vape tax, which is the first time vape has ever been, been part of that. So that was exciting to raise it by $2. And now that went into effect January 1st, and it does include vape. So those are two things. Every time we raise the price of these products, it encourages users to quit. So that's another strategy that has also worked. And it also tends to hopefully help youth from picking it up and starting because of the cost. So again, Tobacco 21 was backed up back in January of 2018 is when that went into effect. And the reason...
This meeting is being recorded.
The reason that we really wanted to continue with, or work on this, was we, our hope is that a 21-year-old is not hanging out with a 14-year-old. So that was the real driver of raising the purchasing age. It's to break up the social circle. We know that there could be seniors in high school that are 18 that then purchase the products and take them back to school and give them to a sophomore or 15-year-old. So we hope by, again, delaying access, stretching out that time that you can legally purchase, will mean that we'll have less youth using the products, especially getting access to them via friends and schools. That's the real, real piece behind Tobacco 21, is just delaying access. Let's see. Let's see what's happening here. Okay. So this is what our retail environment looks like. In the spring of 2018, we participated in the statewide tobacco and alcohol retail assessment. This is the first time the state has done alcohol, so that's also available if anyone's interested in looking at that. But we've done tobacco before, so this is the second time, I think, that we've participated in this research study. So across Oregon, folks visited about 2,000 grocery stores, convenience stores, gas stations, anywhere that youth can access these products. And this is our results from our county. So for us, we partnered with Portland State University. A class was able to assist me in going in and looking at these products. It was just a survey. They just filled out while they visited the store. Didn't really have to engage anyone. They could just kind of do it by seeing what's there. We looked at 257 retailers. We chose those retailers, again, based on being a big-box store, gas station, or convenience store. We don't have a list of retailers, because Oregon is one of nine states without a tobacco retail license. And that is something that makes it very difficult when we're out doing these assessments to really get at who is selling in our communities, what are they selling them for, all of the, all of those things. So we started by taking a look. This is, this is the landscape. This is what our youth are seeing when they're, when they're out and about. We know that we do have a really bad situation with electronic cigarette use in our youth. And September 12th of 2018, the FDA actually came out and called it an epidemic that requires historic action. And this just shows you, this just highlights the problem here in Washington County. So you can see how dramatically it jumped in use. And we're still seeing that happen. We're now seeing, you might have heard a lot about Juul. That was a very popular brand that we heard a lot of. Looks like a USB drive. Juul is now just one of products. It's no longer the, the highlight product. It's one of many. The more popular ones currently tend to be disposable. So we're looking at puff bars, which look very similar to a Juul, but they have about 200 preloaded puffs in there. And then instead of refilling your cartridge, you just throw it away. And those also come in a variety of flavors. And that's what we also have learned, is who, who is attracted to those flavors? Well, it's our young people. When you get, start looking at adults over the age of 25, we have a dramatic decrease in the use of flavored products. If folks are vaping, they're tend to be doing more traditional tobacco flavors, but all those strawberry flavor, bubblegum, creme brulee, all of those are preferred by the crowd 25 and under. So we do know that this is a situation that has, it's, it's part of what is driving that use of a vaping product, because now you have something that doesn't burn when it goes down the throat, like traditional tobacco. It doesn't leave any lingering smell on you. It doesn't taste bad. It doesn't stain your teeth. All of those things that we would see from traditional tobacco. So I call this the new tobacco, especially with the newer generations. I don't see us making a full-blown switch back to the combustible tobacco from years ago, because technology is so much more advanced. New products are hitting the market all the time, and it's really those flavors. You can have something that tastes like strawberry. Why would you want to taste something that has a very burned kind of taste in your mouth, as opposed to something that tastes like a milkshake or something? So kind of with that background of information for you, this is what's leading us to want to pursue tobacco retail licensing. And the reason I'm talking to you today and other cities is to gauge your interest in these efforts. Tobacco retail licensing would require any business that is selling a tobacco product, including a vaping product, to have to have a license to do so. This would also let us do educational support, anything that a business would need. It is an annual licensing fee that we would be looking at with an enforcement system. So the licensing fee would cover the cost for Washington County to... I don't know what happened. Let me try this one more time. Let me get back in. And we'll just go right here. Okay. Right now, tobacco retail licensing is, is looking like it's going to show up at this legislative session for statewide. The licensing that's being proposed statewide is a straight-up license fee. That's it. There's no other extras added on. So with that, we are wanting to talk to all of you, because we are still thinking of wanting to push our tobacco retail license a little sooner than later. And oh, this keeps starting and stopping. Not really sure. Let me try this again.
I'm just glad I'm not the only one.
This is really weird. It doesn't normally happen like this, so that's why I'm like, hmm. Um, so thanks for your patience. We are still looking at it for unincorporated Washington County. And then our hope is that the cities will want to join us via intergovernmental agency agreement. And the reason we're, we're kind of pushing it a little bit is because due to COVID, this work went on pause for quite a long time. And some of you may remember, we were talking about this about almost a year ago, and we did some presentations in the beginning. COVID happened, and then we all started, we all had to stop doing our work. So now we are coming back to it, and we are wanting to see again about doing this, reinvigorating this, but starting it with, starting it with unincorporated. And if we can pass it with unincorporated Washington County, the benefit to that is that we would be grandfathered into the state process. So really, what it means is it gives us a little more flexibility and choice on how we want to administer it. So instead of, if the state passes it, it's just, we, we have to go with what the state decides it's all going to be. Whatever the fees will be, the penalties will be, all of that. If we have our own, we get a say if we want to still manage it ourselves, what we want our penalties to look like. There's just a lot more to, that we get to do instead of just having to go with the state. So that, that's our hope and why we are kind of pushing this work a little bit quicker. I have no idea why this keeps doing this to me. Um, let me just...
Your internet might be having some issues, possibly.
Yeah, I don't know. It's very strange. I've never had this happen before. But this is, this is basically what the hope is of having TRL, is that it will reduce youth access. We'll be able to monitor it. We are looking at additional components of our tobacco retail licensing program. So we are looking at, we looked at all these things. The main thing we're looking at now is just flavor restrictions. So we're not calling it a flavor ban, because we would allow flavors to be sold in 21 and over establishments. So that would keep your vape shops, that would keep flavors possibly in marijuana shops, any place that you have to be 21 and over to enter. It would just take flavors out of grocery stores, gas stations, all of those places we know kids go to. So we include in the flavors, we're also including menthol. So that's also going to be your mint with vape as well. So anything that's mint or menthol, we're just going to go ahead and, and ask that those be in the 21 and over establishments. We are also hoping to do restrictions on price discounts. So no two-for-ones, all of those things. We know that that price, again, drives use. So we're hoping that we can eliminate the, the two-for-one discounts. What we heard before, when it comes to our other cities, was that you all, what we were hearing was most of the cities weren't big fans of us pursuing zoning or density. That was something that each city would rather they control, if that's something that they wanted to do. So we took that off the table, off our ordinance. And any type of advertising guidelines would have to also be incorporated into a sign ordinance that each city, again, would have to kind of, would have to do that on their, on their own. You can't, you can't put a ban or restriction on a particular product. Sorry, this is like not working for me. Do you all have this presentation in front of you by chance? In paper form?
Hey, Mike, can you pull it up on, I think I put it in the...
We have officially got bombed.
Maybe that's why I'm having trouble. Maybe somebody's trying to...
From the outside?
Yeah. That was weird.
Okay.
That did happen once at a state meeting that I was a part of, so that was pretty interesting.
Some more records and shit. But instead, we're going to spend 150 grand just to make...
You are getting, you are definitely getting someone trying to infiltrate your meeting.
How do we stop that from happening?
I'm doing it right now.
Kate, remember that one we were on that one time?
Burned into my brain.
Yeah, that was disturbing.
Okay. All right, you, you got it locked?
I didn't even know that was a thing.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Where there's a road, there's a way. So have we locked this out?
Yeah, Paul is no longer in here.
Okay.
Should I go ahead and try again? Do you think maybe?
Go ahead and try.
That was it? Okay, let's, let's see what happens. Okay, so hopefully I won't get bumped off. So these are the things that we're thinking of.
That was me.
Oh. Okay, all right. So we are not looking at the advertising guidelines, because again, that would require each city to change a sign ordinance, where then you would have to decide that only 10% of the outside of a store could have advertising. It would have to apply to all products. You can't just restrict a certain product. So it, it's a little bit more work, but a city could definitely do that. And that is something you could consider in the future if you felt that you were having a lot of convenience stores doing billboard kind of blasting, and it was another issue, that that is something that could be considered in the future. It's not something we're looking at right, right in this ordinance. So we wanted to also see what would be the impact of tobacco retail licensing in our community when it comes to the, the business environment. So we partnered with Portland State University's Northwest Economic Research Center. And this is what they came up with. So we, you can see that's a very low impact when you're looking at employees, FTE. We're looking at less, you know, just slightly less than six full-time positions being affected across the entire county. We would, of course, be hiring for this program as well, so we're hoping that would offset that. But the impact is just so very minimal that they did not find it to be statistically relevant to cause, to cause a problem. Okay, these are the other jurisdictions that have passed tobacco retail licensing. Clatsop is the latest one. They just launched it just a couple months ago, I want to say, so very recently. Multnomah's the longest. They've been, they're in year four of their operations. And then we also have Benton, Klamath, and Lane who are operating. And those, those are a little different in that some of them might have unincorporated, and a couple cities have joined so far, or just unincorporated, still working on cities. Multnomah's the one that has gone full-blown, have been able to get cities to join efforts. It's actually a countywide ordinance that they're operating with. And that's similar to what we are looking to do here in Washington County. So we're, we're hoping that you would join us in those efforts. And that's similar to what is already in place with animal services, that same situation where we would come in, we would manage it all for you. We would just let you know if you had a particular retailer that was particularly, you know, heavily violating or something that we, we felt you needed to know about this situation. Otherwise, we would handle all of that. They would get their license through the county. We were proposing they would have two inspections a year. So one, that's just a compliance check. Do you have your license up? You're, you're displaying the products appropriately, all of those things, just kind of a, hey, do you need anything? And then a second inspection, that would mean that everybody has to, you know, make sure they're in compliance with minimum legal sales age. So we would send people in that are about 18 to 20 and see if they purchase. And if they don't purchase, that's great. That's what we want to see. If they do make a sale, then that's when we would go in, and go into the enforcement piece of, of the, the licensure. So that's, that's really quickly what it would look like. What we've done already is have some conversations with other cities across the county. We've also gotten support to do this work from our County Board of Commissioners. They've given approval for unincorporated and also for us to have these conversations with all of you. We've gotten some advocate support. I co-chair our Substance Use Prevention Collaborative, which is part of our Community Health Improvement Plan for the county. And that collaborative is made up of schools, law enforcement, anybody that has a vested interest in youth substance prevention. So we have coalitions, we have, we have life works, we have youth contact, just anyone in the community that, that works with youth are part of that. And they've all expressed interest in this work and support of this work. And our Public Health Advisory Council has also given their support. We were able to do a community panel survey this, last August, just recently. So we were excited that that was able to happen, even with COVID. We were able to do a telephone survey. About 400 residents of Washington County found out that most of them are very supportive. It's over 80% are supportive of this effort, and over 90%... And over 90%, when it comes to communities of color, which is wonderful to hear that they're supportive because those communities are particularly targeted by the tobacco industry and their communities are most impacted by the tobacco industry. And they've all expressed support. We wanted to continue with that survey and do focus groups and, and reach other communities that we know. A phone survey is just not the best way to make those relationships happen. But COVID happened and that really derailed that piece of us being able to do that, that face-to-face connection. It's something that we're still thinking about, hopefully revisiting and doing once, um, the pandemic is, is passed and we, and we've moved through that. So that's, that's everything that I have for you in a nutshell about what this program is and where we're at with it. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. This is my contact information. Should any of you think of questions later, definitely can reach out to me. But I'm happy to answer any questions now if you have any and any feedback you have.
I have a question, Gwen.
Yes.
Why are there, why would there be six jobs lost? If we were to enact the TRL?
Yeah, what, how, how the Northwest Economic Research Center did the analysis was they look at what the cost of a retail license would be on a business. And they calculate, they have all these systems that they run. I'm just looking really quickly for my, my notes. So they look into the cost of the license and if that business would be impacted, how so? And would it, would it force them to have to, you know, cut back on something? We don't actually anticipate that reduction because more often than not, they make up for it by selling other products. And/or raising the price of products, which right now tobacco has been raised as we know through the tax. But also there's a lot of deals that the tobacco industry makes with these retailers. So they tell them, don't you worry about it. We'll cover that little bump that you have to pay. So you, you'll keep selling our product. So they tend to not really be hit that hard. As you might think, because the tobacco industry definitely helps and gives them lots of perks and benefits to, that's why you see so much tobacco advertising. Cause every time they put up an ad, they get a kickback from the tobacco industry for displaying that ad. So the more ads they put, the higher the, the check is for them. So that's why we don't anticipate it. But if, if, if you didn't have that factored all in, um, that would might, that could potentially be the impact that a business, if it's a convenience store. Might, if they had to reduce some hours on someone's, you know, and you total it across the county, that's why we're looking at that number.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Gwen, uh, there must be some opposition to this. Are you aware of opposition? And where might that opposition to this plan, where would that come from?
Right. Um, so far I have been able to speak to almost everyone. I still have to speak with banks and Tigard. Tigard has expressed interest in the past for, for this, so it remains to be seen. But the only one that has been really, really adamant about possibly not, not joining our efforts is Sherwood. And that's mainly coming from, that message was made loud and clear by their mayor. I'm not sure where the rest of their council sits on that. Um, and then Gaston was, they, they weren't committing either or. They, they were just kind of sitting with it still. So haven't really gotten a firm yea or nay from them. North Plains is also wanting just a little more information. So they just, they didn't want to say yea or nay quite yet either. They wanted us to come back, which we would do anyway with all of you. Is come back when the ordinance is officially drafted, which is getting close to being finalized. But North Plains also was curious in seeing a budget for how this program would run, what we're estimating that to be. I can tell you right now, I don't, I, I keep forgetting to bring it right up in front of me, but it is, um, between eight and $900 for a licensing fee. And that's an annual fee. That number we came to based on how much it would take to run a program and hire the people we need, the software we need, all of that. And based on recommendations and things we've heard from Multnomah County. What we, what Multnomah County didn't take into fact was if someone violates, you know, violates the license, it's, it requires additional inspections and additional time. And they didn't anticipate how many violations they were going to have. And so they, they were at a 20 some percent failure rate, which is really high. So we kind of are factoring all of those things in. And being that I don't know how many retailers I really have, I based it off that number that you saw earlier for the landscape assessment of 257. I, I added another 150, maybe even 400, just assuming there's people out there I don't know. And so it very well could be, we find out later, oh, it's not, we need to adjust our budget because it's not as many as I thought. Or we just want to make sure that we have the right amount and that we don't have to go back to our board of commissioners and then ask to raise it. Cause that's where Multnomah is at. And so that's, that, those were just lessons learned from the other ones that have gone. But so far everyone else that I've spoken to have, have expressed interest in joining. So it's just those couple of cities still.
I have another question.
Yeah, sure.
So the, the recent tax that was just passed to, I think you said it was $2 more. What's that money being used for? And can that money pay for this program? Because I guess my only concern is, you know, we just saw one of our local small businesses here in King City closes doors because of a new tax that, you know, the, the county or state, I'm not sure which it was, put on their business, a sales tax basically. So I guess I just want to be, um, I want us to be aware of how this might impact our small businesses here.
Right. Um, so the tax is, is on the consumer. So that doesn't affect the business owner, but it affects the buyer, the customer. Right now we are in the midst and I actually had a state, state, uh, meeting, our tobacco reduction advisory council met this morning and we were exactly talking about this. How is that money going to be sent for prevention? So we are hoping we'll see some going to prevention. There's also going to be some going to some equity work and different things like that. So we really don't know quite yet. Those conversations are just now starting. So we don't really know. But that would take place a lot on the state level and how they choose to allocate the funds. For us, this would be, you know, we'd be collecting the money at the county level. So that's, um, also something that, you know, we, we don't know how the tax will affect those things quite yet until we hear from, from the state. Part of this work that we're also doing is, and I forgot to mention is that we're contracting with, um, human impact partners. They're located in California near Berkeley. And they work on equity and they're helping, they're going to help me, um, make sure that tobacco retail licensing is done in an equitable way. That it's that we're taking into account how we are communicating about this with small business owners and with also limited English speaking business owners. And that all our, we make this process as easy as we can. And so they're going to be helping me figure out how to roll this out in a way that makes sense for everyone's community. Cause it's going to look very different depending on the city that we're in. So we really want to be thoughtful about that process. So that's something that we're already thinking of and, and working towards, um, as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Good, Dave?
Gwen, how, how is that tax collected? And the, uh, the business is going to have to separate those funds and so on. How does that work?
You mean the licensing fee for tobacco retail licensing?
There's a tax per unit or is it just a, just the licensing fee?
Yeah, for, for tobacco retail licensing, it's a, it's a license fee. So it's similar to what a business already pays for, for alcohol, when they're going to sell alcohol or marijuana. This would just be another one of those licenses that they would have to achieve, you know, purchase, repurchase every year. So we would be in contact with them. We would send them reminders. That's the whole software system that I was talking about to manage the whole program. So it'd be a one-year fee that would come up to renew the license every year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, what would you want from us? I mean,
Well, what, what, what I?
If you are in support of this, what would you like from us?
Yes. Um, so one, I, with this, this conversation of hearing if you have any concerns or anything that, um, you would like more information on. I will be coming back around once we have that ordinance more finalized to share with you. But if there's anything else you want to see besides that. And then also where maybe you feel as a council, you'd be leaning towards. You know, if you have the right information and everything, is this something you would support joining us on? Or are there any reservations and, you know, concerns that would keep you from joining these efforts?
Okay. Well, I can tell you right now that I support anything that's going to protect our children, uh, from harm. So it's, it's a good, uh, concept, is something that I think is important. And, uh, and for the rest of the council, I, I can't speak for them, you know? So if we, uh, need to make sure that we are all in support of it and look forward to the ordinance that's going to be coming through so that we have an opportunity to understand very clearly. What is, what kind of impact it's going to have on the businesses? And we don't have that many, first of all. And, uh, so we have the grocery outlet, we have, uh, the liquor store, uh, King City Liquors. And maybe, uh, the coffee shop and, uh, Dottie's, I, I don't know. So maybe there are about four or five, uh, businesses in King City, uh, that this would apply to. Micah?
Yeah, I, um, thank you very much for the presentation. I definitely su- support this, this effort. Was curious just to find out what type of feedback you had gotten from retailers that you'd spoken to about, uh, especially about the, um, the license. Of just, uh, you know, is this something that in some ways gives them some backbone or, or teeth to deny giving, uh, or selling to minors? And they support it? Or is this something that they're fighting back on paying any additional money?
Yeah, we've had limited, honestly, limited conversations with retailers because we were starting all of that. And then COVID happened. So that delayed some of our interactions. I've had, um, I've gone to a few city chambers and, uh, small business association groups. And so far the, all of those folks have been supportive. I haven't heard anyone say they didn't agree with, with this. You know, our, our hope is that we keep it local. Like I said, the state is still pursuing it, but this is, this is still like about the eighth or ninth time, believe it or not. This has gone, come up at the state level and been, you know, didn't get that far. The bill ended up dying. So we don't know. But this time they have stripped the bill so far down to being just a license fee that it could very well pass. And so that's why we're kind of picking up our game a little bit because we get grandfathered in that way. It would just give more choice to us. So I think business owners are aware that this has, this is a thing that keeps coming up. Some of them have been surprised in a, you know, talking to me like they've been surprised something like this doesn't exist. Because they, they know their counterparts in other states and all of this, and it's very normal to have a license. So they've been actually surprised there isn't one here. So I, I haven't heard anybody negatively against it. I think most of them, um, feel it will hold, hold other businesses accountable. So that we have a way to monitor that they're not selling to youth. And if we make the penalties strict enough, we can really do some impact as far as like, just don't sell to kids. I mean, this is basically what this is about. It's just following the law and don't sell to kids. And as long as people do that, we hope it will be fine and run smoothly for them.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? Well, Gwen, this is great, you know, and I really appreciate the work that you are doing. And as I said, it's important. And, uh, I think, uh, once we know a little bit more, you can kind of count on our, uh, support for this, you know? And I think, uh, based on, uh, not hearing any opposition to it, uh, from the council. I'm going to make an assumption that, uh, we can be supportive of, uh, doing the right thing in this, uh, particular arena. So, Mike, do you have any comments related to?
No, I don't have any comments. I think we've, uh, kind of walked this before Gwen, when, when you had a chance to present before. And, uh, you know, I think we just keep our ear to the ground. Um, you know, taxes are always concerning, especially for small businesses, I think. That's something we all need to be cognizant of, of what those impacts ramifications are. But I don't think anyone would stand against the program. I think we're all, uh, 100% behind keeping tobacco out of the, the hands and lungs of our little ones. So, uh, you know, I think you'll find a, a hefty support there. But the tax is always that one, uh, drawback, but it is what's good.
And I can, I will definitely be back in touch with you, um, Mike, once I have like the actual ordinance. It's very close, um, in my hands to figure out how you want me to circulate that with your council.
Everything. Yeah, just, uh, shoot it my way. We'll have a review and, uh, legal counsel will take a look and then we'll present it back to this body and move forward.
All right, that sounds good. Okay. If we don't have any other questions or concerns, Gwen, I want to thank you so much. It's always a pleasure seeing you and it was a great presentation. So thank you.
Thank you for your time. I really appreciate it.
And great work.
Bye.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we'll move on to our open forum. We covered everything else. Is that correct, Mike? We got, uh, everybody sworn in. So now we'll go to public forum. We welcome public comment at this time. Council will be happy to receive your comment pertaining to items on the agenda, including questions, suggestions, complaints and items for the future. Each person's time will be limited to three minutes. Uh, do we have anybody, Ronnie? Anyone?
Ronnie, are you aware? I asked everybody to unmute themselves if they have anything to chat.
One's going twice.
Doesn't look like we have anybody here to talk.
Okay. All right.
Going twice.
Don't we have, uh, oh, we have TVFNR, they're going to present on the resolution.
Yeah, on the resolution, uh, 7.3. I believe they're all, they may also give an update on the COVID stuff. If she's up for it. Maybe.
Since we have, uh, do we want to go ahead and do that ordinance before we do our election of officers?
Election officers, we can get through that pretty quick and then we can get into the regular business.
Okay, all right. So we'll close the open forum and then we'll go, uh, there isn't any unfinished business. We'll go to new business and we do have to, uh, elect, uh, appoint officers.
So, uh, councillor Moore has pointed out that, uh, we don't technically have a secretary or treasurer in the charter. Those aren't necessarily positions that we have to fill. I think that was something that we were looking at previously, but it's up to this council on what they wanted to do. That was a, a holdover from the previous council, um, because they're wanting, uh, we had a couple of councillors that wanted to have a little bit more involvement in other roles. So, uh, per our charter, we really have two positions. That's the mayor and council president. And so mayor, uh, maybe you want to, uh, ask for nomination for mayor? And then we can ask for a nomination for council president. And then, uh, perhaps if we want to, uh, carry forward those other two positions, we can ask for, uh, nominations for those as well.
Okay, I kind of like the idea of having, uh, a treasurer for sure. Someone that works, uh, with you on the budget and has a better understanding of that. I was never really clear, uh, on exactly what the role of the secretary is. So it, for the purpose of everybody here, uh, before we decide, uh, what, uh, the secretary would do. Can you kind of give a brief overview of what that role would be? That's as much for me as it is for everybody.
So what we, uh, reserved, uh, is kind of like duties for the secretary was a review of any sort of, uh, RFPs, any sort of legal documents, those sort of, hey, would you guys keep it down? And, uh, any sort of legal stuff to deal with and, um, that way they, they had a chance to review that before, uh, it came to the council.
Okay. All right. So we need some opinions from other councillors before we move forward because I'd like to really kind of get an understanding of whether or not we want to have those roles. Uh, I have an opinion on the, uh, treasurer. I can see where there may be a benefit in having a secretary. So, uh, other thoughts?
I think, uh, mayor, um, I think the leadership roles are important to develop, um, kind of a conduit into a, um, a more executive role, right? I, I think, um, I, I know that all of us have, um, discussed, you know, changing a little bit of the way that maybe the mayor position down the road, right? That maybe that goes on the ballot. But I think that it's really important to cultivate and kind of have a conduit of, of people and help kind of transition them from just, um, kind of member to a more executive level. And I think traditionally, um, on other boards that I've served, there is a process of, um, of kind of a, uh, I don't know, learning or whatever. It's been a very long day and I was very, up very early. So I apologize for being so inarticulate, but. I don't, l- learning or whatever. It's been a very long day and I was very up very early, so I apologize for being so inarticulate, but uh you know, I think it's important for if someone has uh down the road uh an eye on being president or being mayor, being much more involved in city, I think, starting i- at a secretary level, transitioning to treasurer and then becoming president or you know, cycling through some of the leadership to help kind of wa- ground them and round them out as a as an executive member of the of the team is important. So I I will say I don't particularly like the explanation that uh Mike just gave as far as having it be more of a legal content. I don't think that's appropriate. Task for necessary as secretary. I think there could, we could develop a little bit better uh uh you know, description or or uh tasks on that, but I think um I think keeping those positions and using it to help call cultivate mentor and kind of participate uh is important.
Well, are we in a situation where before we decide on uh, we can do these at any point in time? Do we need a better definition of what those roles would be? Uh don't we have the ability uh to make those assignments and make a decision on that later?
Oh, we also had the secretary as a sig- as a signatory. Is that correct or did we not recall?
No, we don't, we didn't do that.
No.
It no, uh so uh for John Boylston, we gave him the secretary position because he asked for it. He did, what he kind of did was read over the minutes, make sure they were good, stuff like that. I think we should wait on the secretary position uh until we have more defined answers and that could be when we put that position on the new charter when that comes out in a year or two.
Okay. And uh what about the treasurer? We should make a decision on that now too.
Uh treasurer, um that was brought on by Gretchen and she wanted to be uh more involved in the finances and kind of looking where things are going. It's always good to have, you know, a second, third, fourth, fifth eye, you know, to look at the financial, financials. If I remember correctly, if I'm wrong, Mike, all Mira did the finances, she gave it to Mike and Mike presented it to Gretchen and
Yeah, so um.
There was no, there was no signing of anything or anything like that.
Yeah, so Mike Marr is our accountant and Mira is our finance manager. So Mira technically lacks a CPI or CPA, sorry. So she's not necessarily qualified to be a finance director. But we're working on getting her there educationally. So we still have Mike Mars who's our uh contract accountant. And so Mike Mars would deliver the financials to myself, we'd review them. I'd deliver them to Mira, Mira would uh break out the uh summary financials and then Gretchen would come in and go over the summary financials with Mira and then it would be presented to the council.
Well, I I I think, and this is my opinion, uh I think both of them need some work. And if we're going to do it, uh maybe it does need to be addressed uh under a charter type uh approach at some point in time. But I think with the structure that we have right now, any one of us has the ability uh to ask questions when we review or to be involved or to get together with you, Mike, uh to get a better understanding. And I would really love for that to be open to any counselor who wants to know more about what's going on with the budget. You know, we have our updates, we have all of those things going on, we're gonna have a budget meeting that all of us should participate in. And I would really just kind of uh would want to leave that door open to any of us uh who has a question and wants to know more uh to communicate directly with you and Mira on the questions or concerns that any counselor might have. If that is acceptable to everybody.
I think, I think that makes sense, especially if, I I mean, I I certainly think that we need to kind of cultivate and develop the definition and the tasks of these executives, so uh and I I think that might be a a great topic for an upcoming executive session or work session, so uh I I I mean, yeah.
We'll work out the detail on that. Let's uh eliminate those two uh for now, but I have some further discussion when we start uh have a a workshop uh for uh you know, in the very near future, okay? Okay, so.
Are we ready for nominations, Mayor?
I think so.
Alright, I proudly and excitedly nominate you, Ken Gibson, as our continued mayor of King City. If you so, we'll serve the pleasure of the people, please.
I would second that.
I second that too.
Okay, so uh um do I need to accept before you vote or do I?
You have no choice in the matter, so no.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor. And all in favor say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
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 I'll even vote for myself. I'm in, okay. Uh number two, I uh like to nominate Jamie Fender as uh council president. Uh so all uh we need a second on that.
Mike did it, I think.
I jumped the gun, I said.
Okay, and we need a vote. All in favor say aye, raise your hand or. Okay, alright, Jamie, you're still, you're still in.
Alright.
And thank you guys very much for having the confidence in the two of us to lead.
Jamie, you have no choice.
I would, I would just thank both of you because you do put a lot of extra effort in and I guess everyone expects that of the mayor, but I think Jamie has done an extraordinary job too.
Thank you.
Here, here. Much, much appreciated. Thank you, Jamie, for your continued service and I I don't, Smart, you weren't on when I congratulated Kate and Shauna uh for successfully becoming a member of this council and uh we have a great team. We're gonna do great things, we have a lot of work to do, uh but at the same time, uh what I said was is that we're all in this for one reason only and one, that reason is to make King City the best it can possibly be, to make it safe, prosperous, and also um welcoming to everybody. So with that being said, uh we will move forward. Thank you guys very much. Thank you for the vote of confidence. Uh so.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Jamie.
Pardon me?
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, next item, seven point two. Oh, we, are we gonna do uh the uh committee appointments?
Yes.
Can we, uh we have uh. Pardon me?
Yeah, do you want to move TVF and R up?
Yes, I do, I do. Uh let's move TVF and R up and then we'll get into the consider uh committee considerations afterwards, okay? So let's skip to seven point three and uh let's get going on that.
Okay, well, thank you, Mayor Gibson and members.
Welcome, Cassandra. Thank you for joining us.
We appreciate uh the opportunity to participate tonight and talk a little bit about fire code ordinance updates, but I thought you might be also interested in hearing about the vaccination work that we've been doing in conjunction with our county health partners.
Absolutely.
So it's good news, right? You you started the meeting talking about the challenges that this past year with the pandemic have presented all of us and the difficulties that many who have either contracted the virus or impacted by job loss have had. We are really humbled and grateful to be part of getting us one step closer to normalcy and while we um still have a long road to to go, we're we're really excited. So uh we have, we stood up our vaccination branch a couple of months ago in anticipation of this. We actually applied for a license with the Oregon Health Authority. Um as of the end of today, uh we have administered almost two thousand doses of vaccines. Um primarily uh focused on police and fire personnel, including King City police officers, so we were happy to do that. As well as some healthcare workers and other folks in that group one A. By the end of the week, we should have about twenty eight hundred doses administered. Our frontline personnel uh were done a a couple of weeks ago, so in the first week of February, we anticipate doing second doses. We do have enough for those second doses, but you've probably been tracking some of the news media to know that um the supply from the federal government to all the states um may have been a a little overpromised. So uh we'll still stay in constant contact with our county health partners and OHA. Um and we just want to be supportive in any way we possibly can to be able to help with that administration, which may um evolve to support vaccination of teachers and other essential city and county health workers. So um I think with that, um oh, I just want to let you know, we will still continue to wear that higher level of personal protective equipment on calls that you've probably seen our firefighter and paramedics wearing. Um because even if our folks have been vaccinated, it's possible that we could still give someone else uh that the vaccine or the um the virus, and so we're still going to be pretty conservative about our emergency mode of operations and we will still be having our personnel wear masks when they're in the fire station and in uh fire district facilities. And we do believe that that has paid off. We have had very few of our personnel contract covid as far as we know. Um and so we're thankful because you may have seen in Seattle and on the east coast in particular, a lot of fire stations um completely shut down. So uh we are really thankful for our partnership with the cities, again, and the counties and um your support, so we'll keep staff uh posted on that. So unless there are any questions for me about covid vaccinations or any other non-fire code uh related business with TVFNR, then I'll probably pass it on to our fire marshal, Chief Steve Forster.
Okay, thank you. That's great news that you guys are doing so much along the vaccine line. I really do appreciate that.
We're so grateful. So I'm gonna mute myself now and Chief Forster.
Hi, thank you. Uh hi, hi, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh it's fantastic uh to be with all of you tonight. It's great to actually get to listen in on a little bit of uh of your meeting. Sounds like you guys have a pretty good time uh at your meeting.
Certainly try. Thank you for doing this, Steve. I appreciate it very much.
It's it's refreshing, so we appreciate it. Again, just super glad to be here, uh is an honor to serve uh King City. Tonight, uh we just, we're here to respectfully request a uh approval of a resolution approving of our fire code ordinance. This is a pretty standard uh thing that we do. I think we were here probably six, seven years ago. We periodically go through and update our ordinance. Um we're actually required by state law to have every city and county that we serve in um pass a resolution approving of our ordinance. Uh so for us, that's uh the privilege of getting to go to and scheduling fifteen uh different cities and counties uh to appear in front of. And uh yeah, the the really the primary purpose of the of of the resolution is it's kind of the state's way to ensure that we as a special district, as a fire protection district, it's kind of the state's way of ensuring that we simply coordinate um with the cities and counties that we serve and to make sure that uh you guys, you all sort of know what we do. It's lost a little bit of its importance over the years in that um there now is a pretty cleanly divided line between building codes and fire codes. Uh so in the past, that was a lot, um it was a lot less clear, and so there was a lot more reason to make sure that there was a high level of coordination. Um but nonetheless, it's still a great opportunity to come before you, make sure you guys are aware of the ordinance um and be able to ask any questions that you may have. Uh our ordinance is is pretty simple. We simply adopt the model uh state fire code. We no longer have any amendments to the fire code. Um we've worked to simply incorporate those right into the state language. That way it makes it a lot easier for businesses uh in the public to comply with just a single code in the in Oregon rather than having um fire codes that are your requirements that are unique within TVFNR. So our ordinance basically adopts the model fire code. Uh we had some very minor updates throughout, just kind of periodic legal review. They always uh like to suggest some minor changes. Uh had a couple of changes reflecting um ki- uh current fees. Uh and um we did have one amendment that was in there previously just related to um verifying of uh automatic alarms, fire alarms. Um but we were able to remove that because that now is embedded in the state code.
Okay.
And so with that, that's kind of really a brief overview. I'm happy to answer any questions uh that you have on the ordinance or anything else, you know, sort of fire code and fire marshal related.
Anyone?
I'm just kind of scrolling through. If anyone gets a chance to read it, if I'm going too fast, let me know and I'll go back. Or if anyone wants to see a particular section, I'll be happy to go back and review.
Yeah, I actually took time to read through it earlier today. And I don't remember a whole lot of it, but I did read it and I think it's pretty standard, as you said.
That's our goal. We don't want anything in there. If there's anything that grabbed your attention too much, we're probably doing something wrong, so.
I think that's all there is. Just the three pages, right, Steve? And then the presentation page.
That's it, yes. And then your resolution, really straightforward, just kind of recaps uh the requirement under state law to adopt it and that's about it.
Okay, so um Mike, do you need to read the uh resolution uh to make it official?
Certainly need to, or we could just pass it by resolution number and then I.
Oh yeah, yeah, I think that'd be fine. Yeah, that's really what I meant. I didn't mean the whole thing.
I'll move. I want to hear Mike read it.
Just, just the ordinance number, just to be sure.
Right, the kids will start screaming any minute now, so.
Alright, so then I move, it would be moved to adopt resolution number R dash two zero two one dash zero one, correct? That's.
Okay.
All in favor say aye, raise the hand, so we can do, or do you know what, uh need a specific count?
You're muted, Mike.
You're muted.
You're still muted, Mike.
But mine is running busy.
Alright, we've got everyone but Smart, so I need uh.
Aye.
Okay, there we go. And I have ca- councillor Fender moved and councillor Thompson second.
That is correct.
Alright. Alright.
Thank you, David, Cassandra. Cassandra or Cassandra?
Cassandra.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Do you want our help with committee appointments? Just kidding, I'm kidding. Alright, we're gonna take your leave, but thank you so much.
Okay, and you guys stay safe and thank you for all that you do for our community. Truly appreciate it.
Take care.
Have a great night.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're gonna go back to uh committee appointments.
Alright, or do you want to just do that second reading on that ordinance?
Oh, we can do that, yeah. Doing the committee stuff last, we can get through all the rest of this and just uh put that at the end.
Okay, because I think that second reading is just by title only, right, Ronnie? Alright. Let me. And I'll be happy to read the second reading on this, if you'd like, Mayor.
Thank you, Mike.
Alright, so this is the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty dash zero two, an ordinance amending the city of King City's municipal code, chapter fifteen, billions and. an ordinance amending the city of King City's municipal code, chapter fifteen, buildings and construction. That is it.
All right, I just have a quick question for the three new counselors. Counselors, have you watched the video on this ordinance from last month?
I was present, I believe, and I.
Perfect.
Think that this is the one.
Okay, perfect.
Planning Commission.
All right, perfect. And then Shawna was there. And Smart was there. Okay, perfect. So all three of you can vote.
Yep. So if you recall, we had a public hearing at our last meeting. There wasn't a lot of comments. Actually, I don't think there was any comments from the public in general. If there's any questions, or we can just move to a vote.
I think it's well understood. Need a motion?
Yep, we need a motion in a second to move it up.
I'll move to adopt ordinance number zero dash two zero two zero dash zero two.
Second.
All in favor?
I need a roll call.
Gibson, Counselor Moore, Counselor Thompson, Counselor Fender, Counselor Platt, Counselor Paulson, Counselor Ocholi.
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous, seven. All right, thank you. And now I think that was the last order of business, right, Ronnie? Or new business?
No, there's an IGA.
Oh, the IGA, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mike, let's go ahead and do the IGA then, and then we'll do the.
So the the IGA is intergovernmental agreement for the community psyche grant. We really need to get on this thing. We're kind of running out of time to spend this money. This is that community art program. Bear with me here as I try to find it in this.
Yeah, it's all the way at the end, I think.
Still in the building code here.
So Mike, did I read it right that they're grouping us together with the city of Tiger and the city of Durham?
That's correct, yeah. And so we'll have about forty seven thousand to spend on our art project.
For the three cities combined?
Just us.
No, just for us, yeah.
Yeah, just for us, but we need to expend the money by, I think, the end of March.
Oh, okay.
So we don't have much time to turn this around and get it out the door. We do have a list of artists and we do, I think Counselor Thompson, you were in some of those meetings. So you know, kind of the efforts that it had put in on the front end of this to get it all moving and get it going. We still kind of need a general location or site. And that'd be really good to have something in mind by our next meeting.
Did you find out whether or not it had to be a mural?
We were thinking it could be like a mosaic or a mural.
Okay.
So something along along those lines where, say, the community could come together and paint like individual tiles and we could put the tiles up, something like that.
Yeah, I remember the idea of doing the mosaic bench and then we could have a bench maybe in the park or somewhere like that, that we all kind of create together or more than one bench. If we, forty seven thousand dollars?
Yeah.
That'd be a very expensive.
I mean, we could do, we do have a backstop that's just created down there that Dave just finished. We also have the wall on Fisher Road that we could do a nice mosaic on. We do have options. We we have that little triangle park at King George and Queen Elizabeth as well, that we could maybe erect something there. We have at least three options for possibly that I can think of, so.
I like the idea of something at the park and I also like the idea of something at any point of entrance into the city.
Yeah, that'd be great. I really like the idea of doing something at the corner of Beef Ben and ninety nine W.
Yeah.
But we're not quite there yet.
Right.
I think after post master plan, post TSP, we might actually be able to do some of the fun projects at the entrance points.
One of the things that I found out that Durham is doing, they are doing it via banners all over the city. So, you know, artwork, specific artwork with different themes on it is what they decided to do via banners hung on light poles, the same way we did for the fiftieth celebration. So that's another option that would, you know, basically it would be visible all over the city if we had money left over and we wanted to do something along those lines, along with maybe a mural in the park.
You know, the other thing at the park, when you kind of mayor crosses, you know, kind of near from where you are, is almost like a natural amplifier.
Yeah.
At the bottom of that, it would be so awesome to put something there so there could be performances or, you know, like almost a little stage or a little area. Or I know Viva, Viva and I have talked about this a lot about, you know, creating something that then could could entice more artists to come along. So I didn't, you know, putting in a stage or something like that, I think is hard. But even if it was just a cement mosaic slab that, you know, then people could use to set up a little performance.
That's not a bad idea, right there at the bottom.
Right there, you know, just where the natural slope is, mm-hmm.
Yeah, outside my window, that'd be perfect.
I, I mean, listen, Mayor, all my ideas, I've given you a library, now I want to give you a stage.
And I love it. I love it. It makes me feel very special.
I love that idea.
I mean, so how much time do we have, Mike?
We have about two months, essentially.
Okay.
Two months, but it's too much to spend the money. We can, we can basically hire the consultant to do the work and pay for the materials and and then it can be paid for sort of in effect, so.
So who, is there a team of people working on this or how's this working?
There's a, there's a group of people from Tiger, Twelton, Sherwood, Durham, ourselves, that basically just kind of came together because there was about, I want to say two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of this money that initially came out from Washington County for the South County areas to spend. And then those kind of got divvied up by population.
Right.
And and there were some other factors, too. There was a base calculation for what it would cost for materials and things of that nature and to get the community involved. And then there was additional for community involvement event, so.
Okay.
But I really do like Counselor Fender's concept.
Yeah, I like that idea, too.
I don't know if you guys saw Viva's comment in the chat, but she said there's a great example of the Rotary Park in Kaiser that has a great stage. There's also one at the Shempoe Park as well. But I, you know, we've, we've always kind of thought, you know, we had before COVID and hopefully again after COVID, that little area worked really well for our, you know, our reading in the park event where we had like, I don't know, a hundred and twenty people. But people just sat there kind of around and we read the books there and.
Is there any way, I mean, within King City, it almost sounds like this is a perfect thing to hand off to the King City Foundation to work it through and come up with a proposal. Is that?
We don't have that much time.
I mean?
We don't have that much time. We ought to get going on it now. Like, if we're going to get it done, we got to get it out the door as soon as possible.
Well, how much is how much time, Mike?
We have until March to spend the money, bring them under contract. It has to be in line with the with this agreement with Tiger.
Also has to go out.
What's that, Ronnie?
Has to go out for an RFP and that can take up to thirty days.
Well, we're going to make it faster than that.
I think we should look for a grant for the stage outside of this. I think it is accepted. I think we don't have the time. Like Mike said, you know, there's not the bandwidth, but the idea is great. And there are other grant opportunities out there. There's some that the Metro sent me some references.
Okay, all right, so what's the plan, Mike?
Have, have we talked with any of our citizens? I don't know that I've heard anything like.
Once, yeah, once this is done, we're going to do a blast out to everyone and try to get some involvement.
Okay.
But we'd need to have some sort of project in mind and the base kind of established on what we want to do. The things that the group has come up with, like I mentioned earlier, is they have artists on hand that can do a mosaic from the tile, from like little tiles, or we can do a mural. Those are the artists that we have. And those were the, that's what we have a lot, that's what we have lined up that we can get moving fast.
The mosaic idea and getting involvement of the the community to all come together to participate and do a piece of it. So I think we could line that up, right? We don't need to organize all of that. I think doing something like that, I think is the, is a great.
Right.
We have examples of what type, because I bet, I couldn't imagine they would spend forty seven thousand on a bench. That just seems colossally expensive, so.
But you could do a wall, like you could do like a short pony wall that's like, you know, two and a half feet tall or something. That's, it's tall enough that you could just, you know, sit up on it if you wanted to. It gives you a place to see it and then we could put the tiles on it.
What, what about the, so down at the park, that where the walkway crosses the creek, coming away from the the playground there? What about two short concrete, like I said, pony walls that go along there and use both sides for the mosaic? Then it also has the component of kind of adding some safety to that with little kids running around, not falling down the embankment.
I like that idea.
I like that, too.
I'm, I'm fine with that if that's what we want to do.
That sounds like a great idea, in fact.
I think it's a good idea.
All right, then we'll move forward with that. So we're talking two pony walls that are probably what, two and a half feet tall, three feet tall?
All at most.
All right. I'll check into, I imagine, is there going to? Let me just ask my engineers, make sure that there's not some sort of safety protocol since it's over a creek. And if everything pans out, we'll move forward with that. If, if not, then I'd say we just kind of move that concept down around the corner near like the playing field or something.
Right.
Or long edge, and then we have a pony wall that's also acts as a bench. You know, that we could do a tile mosaic on, or we have it over by the basketball court or even over by that Ken, the near Ken's area there at the the north end. So either any of those locations would be fine in my book.
I, I think the park is the ideal location. And if we can find the spot, I start with what Micah is talking about. And then if that doesn't work out, we look for another location within the park to do what we're doing.
I think around, you know, around the gazebo, I know, I know Viva had suggested like a horseshoe trap, too. So like even kind of outlining an area that could have, you know, do so. I mean, I think there's a lot of stuff, there is a question in the chat asking if, if there's extra funds, can that be used to the community? The walls and benches shouldn't cost that much, so.
Yeah, we can use, there's.
Grant you, like, usually with the grant, you have to use it on what you say and then you have to prove afterwards that you used it on what you said you were going to use it on. So, but it might be interesting to see, you know, if, you know, if we, if we did something like.
We can do like an ice cream feed, too, to expend whatever money we have left, you know, just like that. Or stickers or whatever.
Right. Okay, sounds good. Any other question concerned about this?
I just wanted to weigh in since I was kind of part of this project. I still like the idea of doing benches around the city. There can be several in the park, around the park. There can be some in our business, like downtown area of King City that we as a community create. So the bench, obviously, we would buy a bench, a sturdy bench. They're not cheap, but and then what my idea was, is that community members can pick up a tile and a paint set from different businesses in King City. Or and or we could have a table at the park on certain days, passing out little kits. And then the tiles would be taken home and the community members would paint their tile. They'd be returned to a business on a certain date. And then they would be given to the artists to fire them and and put them on the bench. And so that way, when the project is done, the community members can search around the city to find which bench their tile ended up on. And it would beautify the city in several locations and also bring a sense of community and joy. And really, the, the whole point of the resiliency project is to kind of uplift everyone. And so I think it'd be a really great way to kind of uplift the community by bringing some joy to everyone, by seeing a little piece of their art around the city.
Yeah, I really love the idea of getting people involved. And, and I also like the idea of having, having artwork, you know, throughout the entire city. I, I like that idea. I think, Mike, um, you know, I guess what's hard is until we know pricing, right? Like, I think, is it going to cost ten thousand dollars to do some benches? And then we have more money to play with, so we could still do some stuff down at that park? I mean, I think it's hard to, so if you need some help volunteer, I'm happy to kind of help volunteer. I can come in next week and do some stuff with you or, you know, do remote to kind of look into stuff. And I'm sure everyone is willing to kind of pitch in to get some information because I think this is a phenomenal opportunity and there's so many.
And, and you know, I do like what Sean is talking about. I just want us to be in agreement that we can do some of these things, one or two or three or whatever the case may be. And I think it's so worthwhile and such a great opportunity. So, well, Mike, you have some ideas and they need to be priced out. And determination has to be, if we're going to go with Sean's idea, there needs to be community involvement. And there needs to be also a way of communicating that opportunity. So, you know, there's a lot of work to be done along those lines. So we need to, you guys need to figure out how to do that.
Mike, so is, is it my understanding that we have a list of artists that we have to use, correct?
We have a list of artists that are kind of vetted by the grant, by the group.
So maybe we can contact them to find out how much these ideas would cost, right? Is that, is that the sequence, how it would work as far as what's the next step to figure out how to work with a budget?
There's a, essentially, there's like, there's a couple that do murals and a couple that do mosaics. So that's what we have to work with. So if we're talking about doing mosaic benches, I imagine that needs to be like a concrete bench. I, I don't, I don't know, so. I, I don't, I'm not sure how we go about that. You know, if we'd have to go track down concrete benches and chase it around. If it's, it's a wall, it's easy. Like, I have the wall on Fisher Road that we could do. I, I could call a concrete company and have them come out and pour a wall tomorrow. You know, there's like, but benches are, they're different. It's a different animal, so I got to figure out how to do that. And we got to figure out where we're going to put them, put them. We can definitely find places to put benches around the city. I just got to figure out what's the right material, how we do the mosaics, if we do little tiles and how those get placed on benches or how that works. It's just different. It's different than what it was scoped. So I'm not saying it can't be done. It can definitely be done. It's just going to be a different process.
Okay, and, and so also theme is very important. What, has there been any conversation about what the theme should be?
That's already been laid out. It's called the Community Resiliency.
Okay, but what does that look like in terms of art?
They have a. They have, uh, they have a logo and everything.
Well, it's. We have to use that in whatever we do. Is that, is that right?
That's quite my understanding. I think that logo is what, if we're using, if we're, um, advertising the resiliency project on social, um, platforms, you know, um, I think that's what the intent of the logo was. I don't think that the logo necessarily has to be what our art is.
No, that, yeah, that's correct, yeah. So, we, we just have, when we do our public information uh, blast, and we start getting people out there, we have to have the, you know, Community Resiliency logo, like proudly sponsored, and like, that this is like, community resilient, or community psyching grant, and community resilience in, in, so Washington County and State of Oregon. We have to have those all clearly identified and labeled, but the art project itself, or what that looks like, is totally different.
Yeah, I think it's supposed to be, it's all about mental psyche, right? They're trying to, to create joy and happiness for all of our community members. And so I think the focus of the artwork itself should just be something that creates joy, whether it's a sunshine and bird mural. You know, everybody gets a tile and they paint a flower, and then you have a bench that's covered in all these different beautiful flowers, or something that just, um, is uplifting, I think, to the community. I think that as a whole is what the project is about. Um, so we could do lots of different things with it. We could do one thing. My concern about a mural like on a wall is graffiti. And I'm not sure how to get past that, and I mean, obviously, it's the same concern with benches too, but I'm picturing a wall like on Fisher Road or something, you know, we've just spent all this money to have this beautiful mural painted, and then somebody comes up and ruins it, and that's my concern.
Like, the pony wall is a little bit better because of the fact that, I mean, you're not gonna have, I mean, it, it's the same kind of, uh, 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 exposure that you would have to a bench as well. I mean, it, it.
Yeah.
It, it's not a huge, like, canvas like a six-foot wall is. It's, uh, you know, something low to the ground that would be similar to a, a bench as far as a target, if you will.
Yeah. I wonder if, and I, I, I'm not sure if this is true or not, but I just wonder if like the tiles, like if you did a pony wall or a bench or whatever, if the, if the, um, glazing on it is kind of better for removing graffiti. I'm not sure if that's a thing or not, but you know, it's not as porous, I guess is what I'm trying to get at, as like a wall would be, a concrete wall. But, um, I think maybe what we should do is have some conversations with a couple of artists, and I'd be happy to do that, Mike.
Yeah, I was gonna say, maybe, Shauna, maybe you should contact, like, if you could contact the, you know, the mosaic artist and just find out, like, what's involved and what's the material and what, you know, like, pricing, and then Mike, if you can talk to, you know, your engineer guy and Dave, and, uh, look, go down and look at the park about, you know, another, I don't know if you guys have seen, but there's, um, also like mosaic, um, like game, you know, like checkers or chess boards, or places where people can play together, and I'm just trying to think of things that will bring, like, the young folk and kind of our senior together at, down at the park to have joy. That's why I kind of like the idea of supporting acti-, you know, promoting activity of inclusivity and community, I think is a cool, is a cool thing, so that the artwork becomes, um.
And, and I agree with all, I agree with all that's being said. My, my concern is how to get this off the ground and, and running. We have the what, what, I mean, whether it be a bench, a wall, or uh, something in the park, and then the theme. A decision has to be made on the theme of what we're talking about, and there's that third piece, is that we want this to be a community-involved process. There's a whole lot of work that needs to be done in order to get those three things done in a very, very short period of time. So, and my concern is who's doing what, you know? If we have volunteers like Shauna and Jamie, and someone else like Viva or whoever from the, um, uh, foundation to assist Mike in trying to get this thing done, because Mike and Ronnie, you guys are gonna have to price it out and figure out the feasibility of what we're talking about doing. Uh, so a decision on theme and locations, and, uh, what kind of activity, I mean, what kind of wall or bench or whatever, those things have to be made right away. Those decisions have to be.
Right, so, I, I'm kind of thinking, one, how many benches? Two, we could potentially do both a pony wall at the park somewhere and a bench, and then have the bench be relay- located somewhere, um, or benches be relocated elsewhere to wherever we're gonna put them, which I don't know if we even have a home necessarily for them right now, but we'd have to try to figure out some area or land, or get a landowner to sign on to us putting it in there. Where, wherever we would go, so, um, but I don't see why we couldn't potentially do, it depends on how much the benches are, but, uh, you could probably do, uh, you know, fifteen or twenty-foot small pony wall, and then do mosaic tiles along the pony wall at the park, and then have a couple benches there. Thinking maybe like, you know, three or four benches, maybe? Like, get those, uh, maybe like the concrete stone benches, maybe? And then I think you can tile those, although I'd have to check with, uh, you know, a tile person, and see.
So Mike, if you wanna shoot me over the, um, name and phone number of one or two of those mosaic artists, I'd be happy to reach out to them and have that conversation, um, regards to, um, what type of bench would be best, um, for doing this project? Maybe kind of get a ballpark figure of, you know, doing a wall, doing a bench, kind of what, what they would charge for it. Um, so at least I can, like, just get started on that.
And, and I'm trying to go off memory. Ronnie, do you, I, I wish we had Dave on the line, because I think him and I looked at like concrete benches not too long ago. But I wanna say they're, well, like, two to three thousand or something per bench, that.
Yeah, it's about there. It's somewhere between a thousand and two thousand. I can't remember off the top of my head. It's been, depends on what kind of brand you get, and, um, kind of the, the the diameters and.
Okay.
So could we just pour a big old block of concrete and call it a bench? Like, it doesn't have to have a back on it. It doesn't have to be a, you know, a bench, but if we say it's a bench, it's a bench.
Alright, so, uh, can we, so, let me make sure I'm clear. You're gonna be working on looking at a pony wall and benches, and then try to figure out, uh, the mosaic piece along with the benches, and would the pony wall have mural or mosaic?
I think they would all be mosaic, so everyone would end up getting a tile. You know, they would paint their tile, and that tile would go on the, the bench or the wall.
Okay.
And then the question, so if that's the direction that we're kind of leaning, where do we wanna put the little wall? Do we wanna do it over the creek? Do we wanna do it over by the playing field, so people can sit and watch playing activity in the field? Do we wanna put it over on the other side, near the hill?
I like the idea about the creek, but I also worry that people would use it to climb on and actually want to jump off of the top of it. It would have kind of the opposite effect, um.
Although it's not a drop directly into the creek, it's just to the, to the embankment, so I don't know that that necessarily presents more danger than is already there to begin with. It felt like, it, it wouldn't provide a platform to jump into the six-inch deep creek.
Okay, where, where are you, are you talking about?
Right next to the playground, where the walkway goes through to the, um.
The tennis court.
To the tennis court from the playground.
Oh, right, okay. I was, I was thinking.
You cross, you cross two culvert to go underneath, right there.
It would be awesome to keep people from walking down there anyway.
Yep.
Yeah.
My, my only concern would be environmental, and, and then if we do put that, what are we restricting our access? Like, are we still gonna be able to get equipment and stuff through there?
Yeah.
Age for the Fourth of July, oh my god.
Oh, yeah.
With those, it, unless it's reducing the actual width of the walkway, that walkway is the, with the uh, larger than a lane of, of traffic, so I think it would restrict too much unless, unless you were actually like building it on top of the walkway.
You would have to. We, we would have to build it on top of the walkway.
Okay.
Otherwise, we'd have to do a whole well and mitigation and impact.
Also for drainage too, 'cause you don't wanna, we can't create like a ponding effect too with the pony wall, you know, we have to figure out how to have egress of water there.
Yeah, it's a little half-circle hole in the bottom.
And I and Dave should go walk around the park, and then we can circulate, like, the top three location ideas that we can come up with, as far as what's constructable, what's, you know, all of these things. 'Cause I think it's kind of hard to sit here and play it on our mind, but I'd love to walk with you and Dave down at the park, and then we can circulate an email in the, you know, and let everyone know, here is the top three areas that we think, and then people can circulate, right?
Yeah, and, and also, uh, we need to look at, uh, where, uh, the benches might be located. Uh, we have that one spot in original King City where the gazebo is, and people walk their dogs along there. It'd be nice to have a bench where they can sit, uh, before they get to the gazebo, or on the opposite end of that, uh, green space where the, uh, uh, gazebo is. Uh, so, yeah, okay, so I like all these ideas, uh, and I'm in favor, and I will fully support it. Uh, but we gotta make some decisions.
Okay. And it looks like Viva, Viva and I and, uh, and Annie will have an offline conversation about, uh, bringing a stage into that little amplifier then.
Okay, and, and Shauna, you're gonna work on the ditch side of it and the mosaic, and Mike, you're gonna look at the feasibility of, uh, the, uh, wall concept that Mike, Mike had talked about.
Okay, so. Alright, so say we do a, um, one foot by two foot by twenty-foot wall, and then we have four benches, Shauna?
I, I have no idea how much the artist is gonna charge for, per bench, so. Um, but, as, yeah, I think we could scatter benches all, I mean, I think adding benches to King City Park would be, um, would be great, give, giving people a place to sit and rest, sit and watch, you know, kids playing and things like that. Uh, uh, and it's another way to encourage kind of, you know, the older generation to come to the park, knowing that they'll have a place to sit. So I think we could definitely scatter four benches, and then if we wanted to put more around the rest of the city, we could do that too. Um, I'm not sure where we would put a wall. I agree that that is probably too narrow right there, um, where that creek is, even though I think it's a great idea. I think it's really gonna limit, especially like Fourth of July, people bringing their golf carts or whatever, um, on the, on the path. That's gonna be great.
It would limit, like, the large truck that's bringing the thing, 'cause it's, it's wide enough for like two to three, or two golf carts go past each other in there already.
Well, we'll look at the feasibility of it. I mean, let's just determine whether or not it's feasible.
I also like your idea of like a wall back towards like the backstop area too.
I, I keep thinking about that too. The backstop. Down along that location.
Alright. Okay.
Alright, alright.
I think we have a game plan.
Conversation surrounding this?
So, we've got a number of benches, we have a wall, we're doing a mosaic. We'll get rolling on it. We're doing, and we'll get it out the door, but right now we have an IGA that needs approval to do it.
Okay. Alright, so we need a motion, I, I, did everybody get a chance to look at the IGA? I mean, I read it. I don't think there's anything I'm concerned about, so, anybody else? Well, we need a motion. Hello?
I moved to approve. I don't have the number, or I don't have it in front of me. My screen just went, so, uh, is, do I have to reference a number? Can I just say I moved to approve that, the IGA?
Yeah, I think you can just move to approve the IGA. Let me just, I don't think there's a.
There's not a number.
I moved to approve the IGA.
Thank you.
My second.
Who was the second? Who was the second?
Donna.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And?
Alright. I've got you, unanimous, right? Mike, I didn't, I can't see your arm.
I said aye, yeah.
Alright, I've got seven oh, you know, it's alright.
Okay, alright. Next on the agenda then, we, uh, finished the IGA, we get, uh, the resolution, so now we need to talk about, uh, committee assignments. Now, you guys, uh, are you gonna put that on the screen?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying to put it up right now.
Okay.
Yeah, Mike, I have the Word docs, so don't worry about that.
Alright. You have a Word doc? Are you gonna share it, Ronnie, or?
No, just u- use the PDF there, it's right there. And, um, I'll use the word, so I can type in everybody's.
Okay, so the first one is the, uh, Washington County Consolidated Communications Association. So we need a primary and alternate on these.
I was doing what last time too?
Yeah, Ronnie, do you have the last time?
I do not. It got corrupted.
Got corrupted.
In this room must know who was on it. Speak up. Who was on it? Hello?
You wanna just table this until maybe next time? And then we can get the list of, uh, folks that were on it.
I was gonna say, Ronnie, you emailed it to all of us after we discussed it a few months.
Hold on, let me, let me look at my.
I've got it via email somewhere as well.
Yeah, I think we can go ahead and get it done. There're gonna be some meetings coming up.
There's, there's meetings next week too, so.
Metro is coming up next week.
And, Ernie, I, I know that I was on part of that WACCA.
Wasn't this Ernie's assignment, and then?
Yes, uh, there's, there's two bo-, there's two boards to it. There is the, the VOC, which is a council, it, which is council, and then there's the technical committee, which is Happala and Brian, or whoever chief decides to send.
Okay, so, uh, let's get rolling here. Uh, so, Ernie, you must have been involved in that particular one, huh?
Yes, I was trying to speak and got talked over there, so, yeah, I was part of, part of this, and I'm on multiple committees that go to WACCA meetings.
Okay, so, and who would, who would your alternate be?
Brian.
Okay, so, uh, is somebody going to be documenting this?
Okay.
Ronnie's got it.
Hold on, hey, we need to clarify, there's two WACCA committees. There's the board, which is the VOC, and the technical committee users. Technical committee users is Chief and Brian.
And they're also the board, aren't they?
Now, the, looks like it was, when we did it back in September, that one got, uh, looks like Shauna was the primary, or somebody else with the last name of Thompson.
Well, maybe there needs to be an explanation. What is the real difference between the two? Who can tell us that?
The board is the political side, that, uh, technical is the staffer's side.
And, Ernie.
The VOC is the policymakers.
Yes, they're board of commissioners there.
And what would we be expected to do? Are, do we become a voting member on this?
We're, we're not a voting member. We're a, we're a, uh, small city share. There's, uh, like, three or four communities, and there is only one vote. Um, I think the member is out of, the voting member is out of Banks. He was with Banks Fire. But, uh, yeah, that's where we're at now. We're not, we're not a full member yet. We're close, but, uh, we're not yet.
Okay. Alright, so, uh, Shauna, do you remember volunteering for this?
I don't remember volunteering, but I'm happy to, um, explore whatever it is, Washington County Consolidated Communication Association. Washington County Consolidated Communication Association. Does anybody know what that means though?
That's, that's the nine one one center.
Gotcha. Happy to stay on the board and start participating in it.
Making this go a little faster. Micah, can I have you read off primary?
I, I have it now.
Okay, well, okay, if somebody can read off the primary and alternate so that we can move it forward a little faster. What?
Thompson and Happala was VOC.
Was VOC primary and alternate?
Yes.
Okay, who is the technical committee, primary and alternate?
Happala and Pollard.
Do you want me to share my screen? Because I have it pulled up.
No, it's okay.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, are we good with this?
Well, somebody share it. I'm gonna stop sharing mine. If somebody can share the list, then we can get through it. So either Sean or Ronnie, whoever wants it.
Alright, let's roll, let's go.
I can't share it, it says, does host disabled.
Get into my email and I'll share it, thank you.
I'm excited for meetings to start up again though, because I have, it's been like I haven't been to a lot of meetings for the last month.
Seems like I have one every day, I don't.
Mayor, I'm in meetings all day too, that's not the fun kind.
It does not the fun time, uh.
One that I get paid for, you know.
Right. Okay, here we go.
Alright.
Alright. There it is, okay, that looks great. So, that is exactly what it said, and I the technical side was Pollard, is, uh, you remember that? And so, he's still good with that, Ernie?
Yeah, that's fine, Jeremy just kind of, he explains all the technical stuff to me, so I can sound somewhat intelligent when I'm talking about it.
Okay, alright, and let's move to, everybody good with that? Shawna, you'll learn more as we go along.
Yeah, I, I just have one question.
Yes.
So for something like this, um, how do I get notified of meetings and things like that?
Well, I, you know, it's something that we could probably get forwarded to you, we, we have to, uh, yeah, everything's still virtual, that's going on right now, the they've got a new director that's gonna be coming in and the board with everything that's going on, because there's going to be a budget committee meetings coming up here real quick. And so it's something that, uh, we'll just have to get you on the email list.
Okay, so can you forward that to me then?
And typically what happens, just so the rest of the counselors are aware, is we email out our representative to these committees, to the committees themselves, and they add you into their mailing list so that you should automatically get the info from them.
That makes sense, okay, thank you.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, are we good with that one?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on to WCCC, uh, that I am the primary, I go uh, every single time, and I'm a voting member of the Washington County Coordinated Committee, and this is all about transportation and, uh, funding for, uh, different, uh, transportation, um, needs, so, uh, Gretchen was the alternate. Uh, I think it would be a great, uh, thing for the council president, uh, to be involved in.
Yeah, at noon, uh, noon meeting, yep, that's, that works for me.
Yes, and it typically is this, really the second Monday of the month at noon.
Alright.
When we were doing it physically, it was at the library, uh, Beaverton Library, but, uh, everything has been virtual and it will probably continue for quite some time that way.
I would imagine, yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, Roy Rogers, uh, is the chair of that, uh, committee.
Perfect, tip.
Now, Mike, uh, you do the, uh, technical piece, right?
Yeah, so, uh, we usually go to the technical piece, it's usually myself, and if I can't go, then I ask Dave to go.
Okay, alright. Sounds good, uh, no need for change there, uh, so Washington County Community, uh, Development Block Grant, that's, uh, Micah.
Yeah, I'd like to stay on that, especially since we're voting next week on, uh, the grants.
Okay.
And I'm happy to stay as the alternate, if, uh, Micah can't ever go. I think, um, that one, it is, uh, you kind of need to have experience on it, so uh, I think someone who's been on it before is, needs to be the alternate, so I'm happy to continue with that.
Okay. Sounds good. Uh, okay, moving right along, any questions or concerns about that one? Alright, we'll move over to the Metropolitan Area Communications Commission, monitors cable and telecommunications. As it stands now, it's, uh, Platt and Paulson.
I'm, I'm happy to stay as the alternate on that as well.
Dave?
I had to get unmuted, sorry about that. I'm okay to stay on that.
Okay, alright, sounds good. Uh, the water board, uh, I think, uh, we made a, a good decision on this, uh, Smart is the, uh, primary and Jamie is the alternate.
Yes, I'm happy to stay as the primary.
Let's, let's think about this now, the name that is not on here yet is, uh, Kate Moore. So, uh, we really have to think about whether or not, Jamie, you cannot overload yourself being on too many of these.
I'm happy to give this one up to Kate if she wants to take it.
Learn all I need to learn about water.
And Smart can tell you all that you need to know.
Alright, I'll, I'll go ahead and contact them and submit, uh, your name, Kate, that way you'll be on the, on the notification, um, emails.
That sounds great, thank you.
Okay, sounds great, uh, the Southwest Corridor, uh, yes, I'm, uh, involved in that now, uh, I don't know how much activity is gonna be going on with that. Uh, Shawna, you are the alternate as it stands today, and I think that's a good one for you to be involved in. Uh, it looks like there isn't gonna be another, uh, Southwest Corridor uh, transportation type package until twenty twenty-two. But, uh, there will be a whole lot of conversation going on, uh, in relationship to what's happening with Metro. And, uh, so, it's, it's an interesting dynamic, because when we look at Metro Council, uh, Ronnie, can you, uh, scroll up or down or whichever way, so I can see the Metro Council? Metro Council and the relate, oh, no, 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 not that far, it stands first page. I think there's a relationship between the Southwest Corridor Plan and Metro Council. So, I think there needs to be a relationship, uh, that, uh, the, uh, primary and alternate need to establish, uh, between those two, Metro Council and uh, the, uh, uh, Southwest Corridor Plan.
I'm in, Mayor, that this is a, a fun one for anyone that's transportation minded.
Right.
And that likes to look at transportation alternatives throughout the metro region and get involved in that stuff, it's a great opportunity.
It really is. So, uh, as it stands now, we need a replacement for Gretchen. And, uh, and really, I would like for somebody else to be the alternate on this. Because it's gonna be a great learning experience as we move forward.
Yeah.
I, I, I'd be happy to be part of that, I have, uh, a background in some transportation, so that would be I think pretty fun.
So which would you like to be the, uh, primary on the Southwest Corridor or the Metro Council?
I, I, I think I'd be, I would be fine with, with either one personally, um, so.
I would recommend connecting them, Mayor.
Okay, I, I understand. What I was suggesting is that maybe the person who is the, uh, primary for the Southwest Corridor could be the alternate for the Metro Council. So, uh, Micah?
Yeah.
Why don't you take the, uh, Southwest Corridor as the primary?
Okay.
And Shawna, do you still want to be the alternate on this?
I will, unless there's somebody else that, uh, maybe like Micah has, uh, more of a background in transportation.
I'm talking about the alternate. The primary.
Yeah, I'm happy to be the alternate.
Okay, and then, I'm gonna skip down to the Metro Council, because I really think, uh, Jamie, you need to be the primary on this.
Yep, I'm happy to be the primary.
Okay.
MTAC, I, I hate to jump ahead, but, um, if we have Counselor Thompson on the alternative for the Southwest Corridor Plan, do we wanna have her as the primary then with MTAC, the Metro Transportation? I, I don't even know if you can do it, Shawna, but it's, Ronnie, can I have you scroll down to MTAC?
Just so you guys, you guys aren't looking at the updated information with the current dates and all that, so.
Okay, we understand that.
There's a J-PAC right here.
Oh, okay, right. So Mike, what, what was your point there?
Sorry, um, my point is that the, uh, Metro J-PAC Transportation Group works a lot on the Southwest Corridor. So, whoever's in the Southwest Corridor Group should probably be into the Metro J-PAC. And maybe it's a reverse role, so maybe whoever's the primary on the Southwest Corridor is the alternate on the J-PAC and vice versa, you know?
Okay, I got you.
That way everyone gets a chance to participate and is involved in equal level. Throwing it out there.
And the meetings for the J-PAC is, uh, every third Thursday every month, seven thirty to nine PM. Oh, sorry, AM.
Yeah. Okay, so, Micah, back to what we were talking, that combination of Micah and I, I really, I would like to see, um, maybe Kate being involved in this somehow. Uh, so we need to figure out that combination between you guys.
Are you on the J-PAC still?
Well, we need to finish the conversation of, of the transfer, uh, the, uh, what we said, the Southwest Corridor. Micah is the alternate on that, and Shawna is the, I mean, Mike is the primary and Shawna is the, uh, alternate.
And then.
And on Metro, uh, I really kind of think it would be a good combination of, uh, Jamie and Kate on the Metro Council.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Anybody have concern over that? Okay, and then for J-PAC, that combination that Mike is talking about, uh, with maybe uh, Shawna being the, uh, uh, alternate and Micah being, I mean, the primary and Micah being the alternate, is that what you were suggesting, Mike?
Yeah, it just depends on if that's, uh, viable for their schedules.
Right, no, I understand.
I don't, some of these are really like right in the middle of the day, they're not always viable, so.
Yeah, that, that time for the J-PAC one doesn't really work well for me and my family.
So, so may, maybe it's something we pass off to somebody else, you know, it was just an idea.
Okay, and any, it's, it's hard for any working person, okay? So this is what I'll do, I why don't I take the J-PAC, my name is already on it, I'll do J-PAC. And, uh, Dave, you already have yourself as an alternate, can you stick with that?
Okay.
Okay, I think that's reasonable, okay. We need to go back up, we, uh, the LOC, Small Cities Group, Micah, that's you and Smart. Uh, we can, uh, stay with that, right?
Yeah, that's fine, but, right, we haven't, we haven't met for now, almost a year, so, uh, but yeah.
I'm okay with that too.
Maybe once we get started back with it, uh, doing that again.
Okay, and now, uh, what, uh, what, what do we have the LOC here for?
That's for LOC meetings and, uh, usually LOC rep. Lately, uh, we haven't really been doing any League of Oregon City stuff.
Right.
Because, uh, lockdown and when then we have the LOC call every Friday, so.
Right.
They also, uh, Gretchen was doing the, uh, conference every year.
Well, that's open to any counselor, and it's just a matter of when there is a, a specific LOC event, a summer conference, a winter conference, a a spring conference or any of those things, all of us are eligible to participate. I don't know that we need to have anything specific like this for the LOC.
I just wanna put one caveat on that, because like the city budget is fairly limited on how much we can pay for the conferences.
Let me just say it this way, you know, within our budget.
There you go. And then the council can select whoever they want to send.
I, I attended the last LOC conference and I also attended their recent training and I'm ha- happy to continue on being like an LOC representative.
Well, my point is, I don't know if we really need to have a representative.
To attend the conferences and.
Yeah, it just depends on what the event is and, uh, how we can, uh, I don't want people to spend their own money on these things, but, uh, you know, at the same time, uh, as Mike said, uh, we will try to make sure that people participate in those events, uh, within budget. So, do we need to have an LOC place over here?
I think it's for the best, Mayor, I think it's been one of those committee holdings that we, we have somebody that's designated to kind of, it just makes it a heck of a lot easier when we look to who's gonna go represent the city on these sort of events, but council wants to change it, it's up to you guys.
I'm, I'm open to suggestions and conversation. Hello?
Oh, like I said, I'm, I'm happy to continue, um, to attend the events, I've enjoyed attending them and learning from um, the, the conferences I've attended so far.
And I, I had a work, I, I had a work commitment that I couldn't attend the last one, but any that come up, especially if I know well in advance, which the LOC is usually very good about sending out save the dates and things like that. So, um, I, um, I'm happy to, to attend, I, I don't necessarily need to have the appointment, uh, so if there's someone else that wants a, an appointment and I just can try to attend the events, um, I'm happy to do that as well, so.
Well, I'm still struggling with, uh, uh, the idea that this is the kind of thing that I would really love to spread around, I really I think that there's benefit in all the LOC training, you know, of interest that people want to participate in, the council members, and the same thing goes for the conferences that, uh, I don't know that I want, uh, to have a situation where only one specific designated person goes to the conference. Uh, I think it's something that is a benefit to every counselor, so I'm not sure how to designate this.
So, Ma- Mayor, do you wanna just mix it up on, uh, you know, I think they do what, two conferences a year?
Yes, at least two.
So if we did like the primary for one and then the alternate for another, and then the following year we mix it up and get two others on there, and then we do. um, you know, there doesn't necessarily have to be a primary and an alternate, there could be a we could break it up by conference, you know, if it's like spring and fall or summer and winter, or however they break up their conferences, we could easily manage that, as long as it's, as long as we don't have to pay for like the whole council to go. It's it's re- it's feasible, you know, it's when we start paying for two or three people going on a conference, it gets expensive.
Right, well, how can we uh designate this that uh uh representation to be determined?
I love doing like some type of rotation, do we have the upcoming year's schedule yet? Can we get that from the LOC?
I have it, it's on the uh agenda.
The website for sure.
And the annual conference is uh October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, the spring conference has been canceled.
So I haven't, I haven't gone to the big conference yet, so I'm happy to do the one in October or I can give it to someone else. I, you know, I, we can do this as a lead to determine later, but I like the idea of having a rotation that everyone attends a conference at least one point in, you know, in.
I I do think that's important, I've been going to everyone. And uh my objective, let me just tell you guys something here, and I think this is important for you all to understand. You know, I'm winding down, you guys are winding up. You need to get more exposure to these things, you know? I know what these conferences are, I participated, I think there's a lot to be learned, and there will maybe times when they want me to participate in some way as mayor, but that does not mean that I am the only one participating, I really, if if anything, I want to rotate through so that all of you get exposed to it, so what do you want to do with this? How do you want to show this on this sheet?
I think he just put it as rotating, because I I I really think that that is a good idea for us all to get that exposure and that that involvement.
I would, I would like to.
I agree.
October conference, and then I think there's a, there's a ton of events throughout the year that are like monthly events or seminars and things like that, that I think we should cycle through, you know, the the council throughout the year. And then next year, I won't attend the big conference and I think someone else should attend. And then so, you know, all of us cycle through the various events that happen throughout the year, does that sound like a good proposal?
I like it, uh, so how do we uh indicate that on this sheet?
So I think what we would do is identify Jamie as our primary for this year, right? And then we do a uh a varied uh, what, varied participation, but we can still keep Counselor Thompson as the alternate for now, and then next cycle Counselor Thompson would pop into the primary, and then we identify a new uh varied alternate and we just keep it rotating.
Well, let's let's talk about this one and and Shauna, you said you went to the one, the last one, right?
I did, yeah, and you know, that was one thing I wanted to point out is it's an all-day conference, so not every work and family schedules can do that, so I I love your idea of everyone being involved, but an all-day conference might not work for every counselor, but there are tons and tons of free, what I've learned in my short time being involved with the LOC is there are a ton of free trainings and events that they have, and I was going to share that later in our meeting, of two that are coming up just in the, in, within the next week. Um, and that should be something that everyone can attend.
Talking about the conferences and we're also talking about the training that they offer. And and I can tell you that there's going to be some real specific training that's going to be coming up on uh through their equity lens that is based on equity, diversity and inclusion. That's being developed now, and I really think that's going to be important for us as a team to be ready to participate in that whole process, and I really want to see all of us go through that kind of training, okay? It it it's going to be really good, uh, so, um all right, let's just uh leave it the way we said it, uh, Jamie and Shauna. I'm almost leaning in towards say, Micah, uh, would it be feasible for you to do? If you know when this conference, the next conference is coming up, would you be able to participate?
Absolutely, that that's the thing is I think if i- if there's uh enough, especially for like those one day a year, I mean, like, I have the the uh CBDG block grant uh uh voting or or uh bids next, next Thursday, and that's an all-day event as well, you just, as long on your calendar, you can make it work.
Right, uh, well, let me just say it this way, and I, I think this would be appropriate. Since Shauna, you went once already and you know that you're going to participate in other things, let's put Micah as the alternate, he hasn't been to one yet, and neither has uh Jamie, you haven't been to one yet either, have you?
So I I would like to go in October.
Okay, so let's uh make it Jamie and Micah, and then we'll con- that will start the rotation, okay?
And we can scroll down, Ronnie, because we already did Metro Council with uh Jamie and Kate. Washington County Transportation Options, that's a staff thing, uh, GPI. It's been uh Mayor Gibson and uh Counselor Fender taking care of this.
Right, I go to all of them, and and what happens, just let me explain the GPI. The GPI meets on the same day every month as the Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium. They're back-to-back, so uh when we were holding them live in, uh, we would do it in Tuolton, and they would be back-to-back meetings at the same location, uh, and we continued to do that via Zoom. Uh, so, uh, and the GPI is really designed to uh be involved in the business aspect of what cities are trying to do, trying to grow business opportunities, bring in new business and all those kind of things. They've really been focused a lot on manufacturing-type businesses and things at a much higher level than what we are actually uh able to do in King City at this point. Uh, so, um.
Mayor, I've never attended one of these meetings because I, I don't even think I've, I've seen an email about these. Um, so is this something that y- you are primary and you want other people to also attend? Or are, is the alternate only when you cannot attend?
Basically, the alternate would be uh needs to be available when I don't attend. I'm I'm trying to explain something to you guys, this is also a succession plan. It says that I'm not going to be here, you know, as long as most of you, I hope. And so I want you to get exposed to these things, okay? So let's just make this one, uh Mike has a piece of it because it's the business side of it, okay? In terms of uh economic development and those kinds of things. So, uh, what is, uh, Mike, your liaison, is that what that L stands for?
Yeah, you know, I only chime in when we actually have something that we're presenting or we're involved with a particular project. For the most part, my role is very minimal, um, I only come in when, when needed, really. And usually they'll send me a notice and say, hey, can you come to this next one? Because we have something that's going to involve the logistics of King City, so. At that point, I would jump on, but uh otherwise, I just kind of most of the time, it it conflicts with my uh Washington County Economic Development Forum. Always seems to be at the same time. So uh it it, it's a challenge for me, but I can set that aside and go to this if it need be.
How long are the meetings?
Uh, an hour. Sometimes an hour and a half. And and it's usually starts at one-thirty, right after the uh Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium meeting ends.
Okay, I I would like to stay on as an alternate, I'd also like to try to uh, start attending uh, more, you know, well, I I won't say more regularly, but attending, right? And um, and that's an easy one that I can slot my lunch, you know, as long as it's not a three-hour meeting, it's going to be all afternoon.
It's it's never that. So, okay, let's do it that way, and I would strongly recommend that you take the same approach to the WCCC, the Washington County Coordinating Committee. Okay, tune in on it, as long as it's Zoom, and if you have the opportunity to tune into it at noon uh, on that uh third Monday, I think it is, uh, but I will send you emails for both of these, okay?
Perfect, because if I just can plug it in now for the rest of the year, we're we're set, right, so. Uh, so that's fine, okay.
And and the the meeting dates are pretty consistent.
Okay, that's good.
And just let me explain one more thing about this, the only reason these uh this uh Portland Inc. got bounced around a little bit because for the WCCC, not the WCCC, the uh Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium meeting, we were trying to accommodate Ted Wheeler of Portland. And first Thursday didn't work for him, then Wednesday was better, and then we were bouncing back and forth to try to accommodate him, but we have stopped doing that, it's consistently on uh that uh Wednesday uh type session. Okay, so I'll I'll forward the information to you on that.
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I just ask, what is the the primary purpose of Greater Portlanding?
They are uh an organization, a nonprofit organization that is designed to attract business to the Portland region.
To the Portland region being?
The metro region, the, so that includes Portland and everything south, all the way down to Wilsonville.
So Dave, they they'll coordinate with uh businesses and try to entice them into coming into the Northwest Region here, the Portland Metro Region. They'll work with uh cities, landowners and other interests to find them a site. Uh, you know, like when Amazon was looking for a site, P uh Portland or Greater Portland Inc. tried to put together a proposal for a few sites around Washington County and Portland Metro to pitch to Amazon. Um, there was a a one just not too long ago, they were looking for uh two hundred thousand square feet of like warehouse, they 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 basically uh, when a company expresses an interest that they're looking for a site, Greater Portland Inc. Does the footwork and then tries to match them with uh one of the community partners like either ourselves or Beaverton or Tuolton or Tiger or whoever's involved.
Okay.
All right, um, now, the next one is the West Side Economic Alliance, and that's a membership. And Mike, we, are are you still paying our dues for the two of us?
Yeah, so that, and that's a little challenging because it's like on an annual basis, so if we add somebody else and we also have to pay for that membership in addition, and it's not, it's not the cheapest membership in the world.
It's not, and you can't uh just uh have somebody else use your membership.
You can bring a guest, I think, occasionally, though, so there there's a chance that we could invite a guest and see if we could get them in. But the way we have it set up is uh senior staff and senior council attend to cover any sort of political or logistics.
Right, and we just had one uh last week.
Yeah, and it, some of them I I don't attend if there's like a, you you know, I'm very selective about the ones that I attend, just because normally there's a cost associated with those as well. So it's like, here's your member fee for attending the count- conference, and here's your non-member fee for attending the conference, so like the member fee for attending is like fifty bucks, the non-member fee is like three hundred and fifty. So it's kind of one of those things where we pay for access, essentially.
And and you know, with the uh uh COVID, is when a non-COVID uh time period, we would get a free breakfast to go along with it, you know?
I don't know about free, because you do.
Pay for the breakfast, but now we're paying the same amount and we don't get breakfast.
Yeah, so it's kind of uh, it's it's been a little, I don't know, I've been trying not to spend any money on lately, so.
No, I understand, well, uh, let's leave it as it is and we'll figure it out, okay? All right, uh, we already did JPAC, right? And then uh the Metro Policy Advisory Committee.
Yeah, this is another great one to be involved with, see what Metro's working on, um, get more of a regional feel and involvement.
I'd love to be considered for the primary on that one, um, I, I know that it's just one, it's just the fourth Wednesday of the month, except December's the second, when I first looked at that, I thought twice a month. If any, if no one else was interested in.
Well, and then, Micah, are you interested in staying as the alternate on that?
Yeah, I'm happy to stay as the alternate on that.
Okay, well, let's put Kate as the uh primary and Mike as the uh alternate.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, what's the difference between the Water Consortium and uh the other, the Water Board?
I think Ronnie and I were trying to figure that out earlier today.
And also, I would tell you that I've never seen an email about this either, so I don't know if it's an active. I don't know if they've been meeting.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, and I tried to look up the information for them and I couldn't find it. Um, the other thing I could do is ask John from uh W A B. Um, see if he knows anything about it, um, and then we'll, we can table this one for later.
Table this until we find out more.
And and it says over to the far right, Metro, the water, the uh Water Board is more uh with Tiger, right?
Correct. Regional, yeah, but I did ask Metro and they said they don't have anything to do with that, with that. So they must have just met at re- uh Metro, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, well, let's just scratch it until we, I mean, no one has uh sent us any information on it.
I found a regional water providers consortium, um, and it lists a whole bunch of our neighboring cities as members and and we're not on the list. I went and put the link in the chat.
Because we don't have water rights.
Right, so that makes, that makes me wonder why we would need to be a part of it.
Unless, yeah, unless we're willing to go out and buy water rights for a few million dollars, yeah, no point.
Well, let's just scratch that one, we don't need to burden ourselves with that, okay?
Good find, Kate.
Thank you, Kate. Okay, HOAs, uh, I li- uh, let's see, we need replacements for Gretchen on and KCCA.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I can change screens here real quick, hold on, because I made up for a request of some of the counselors, they asked for updated information. Can you guys see that?
Uh, no.
No. Hold on, let me try. Can you see it now? Okay, so this is the new layout that I'm working with right now.
Oh, I like this, that way we have someone to contact, awesome, Ronnie, good job.
So homeowners association is broken down for each little area now. They add alternates in case we wanted to, but I don't necessarily think that's, we need to, but I mean, that's up to you guys. So, there's your list for HOAs.
So, and Smart is uh, you're the representative for Edgewater, right?
Correct. Correct.
The primary. Smart? And you you are interested in continuing?
I think that's a yes, Mayor.
I heard yeah.
My chief of staff says yes.
Uh, who's the alternate?
I am. I go to them anyway, so.
Okay.
I'm happy to continue.
Okay.
And next is Highlands, and that was Dave Platt.
Yeah.
Yes, oh, and just I just wanna let you guys know that we are still trying to have consistent meetings with the HOA presidents. Uh, we've had, what, uh, three, we have a third one coming up, is that right, Ronnie?
Oh, we have, it's either the third or fourth, I can't remember off the top of my head, and that's next week, I think, the twenty-sixth.
Yes, yes, so uh, that's important, too. But uh, attending the uh board meetings, the HOA board meetings, is what this one is really all about. So, uh, just wanna separate those two things, but I will continue to try to meet uh with the HOA presidents.
Do we have information on when the board meetings are?
I'm still gathering a lot of that information. Um, I've gotten a few replies, but um, like Castle Oaks, they they don't return my emails.
Castle Oaks South doesn't so much have meetings ever.
Yeah, and I think John was saying they were talking about dissolving eventually.
Great.
Okay.
Highlands is fourth Wednesday. Fourth Wednesday.
So Dave, you're continuing on the uh Highlands, do you need an alternate?
Um, only for the company.
I'd be happy to to join you, Dave.
Okay.
Uh, next is Royal Royal Garden Condominiums Association, currently we have no representation from the past years.
One's Royal Gardens again?
It is in between, actually Barry, you can, if you're still on. Uh, it is between uh.
Is that the one that you need to cross the bridge to get into?
Yes.
Yeah, it's off Royalty Parkway, you take the little condominiums right there on the creek.
Wow, okay.
It's uh in behind the Best Western.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Do we have any idea how often they meet, or?
Um, I, he, that's the one that got ahold of me, and they meet once a month, yeah.
Who was on that?
Nobody, it's a new add-on.
Oh, it's a new add-on, so we need a new person for that.
When do they meet, what time, do we know?
Um, uh, no, not yet, I'll find out.
Could we maybe table the the HOAs until next month and find out when all the meeting times are? Cuz uh, some of these, I'm happy to attend. I I don't wanna take all of them, obviously, but uh, but I I think these these are crucial to make sure that someone from the council is there. Uh, but I think we need to really understand what time they are, we did in the chat function, Edgewater's meeting is tomorrow night at six thirty. And um, they did change their time so that they wouldn't conflict. For a couple sessions there, they uh scheduled them the same meeting as council meetings. But is that something that we can try to do, or do, or Mayor, do you wanna put these, you wanna just get through these?
I I just wanna make sure that it works for everybody, and uh, so I agree that it probably make more sense for us to uh table until we know the exact times that they meet.
Cuz candidly, I'd really like to start attending the KCCA meetings, but it, you know, not, if I'm not gonna be able to do it, I don't, you know, if they're gonna so I I think I kinda need, before I or before I volunteer for any others that aren't my own HOA, then.
Right, no, I understand. Okay, all right, let's, uh, anybody object to that? Okay, all right, let's uh, see if we can finish up. CPO four K, that's what's next, right?
Yes.
And uh, it says general rep.
Yeah, that's supposed to be general reps, rep.
Okay, so I have strong feelings about CPO four K. Uh, when there's something on the agenda that's related to us, I think we need to have representation. Uh, but I'm open to your thoughts on whether or not we need to have a specific person representing the city at the CPO four K meetings.
Didn't they just add us on again and didn't even tell us, Ronnie?
Agenda again?
No, it said there was a uh urban growth boundary update in their next meeting.
It's Gretchen giving an update.
No, Gretchen can't give an update on that. We have to have somebody from our team doing that, that is not something that Gretchen should be doing now.
Yeah, they keep throwing this stuff on the agenda, and they don't authorize it through the city, so I don't understand what they're doing, and.
Well, let let me reach out to Kathy Stahlcamp, because this can't happen. And the updates, I need to steer this conversation away from CPO four K to the process. Okay, and I, so I don't appreciate having to uh keep going through this. They need to come to us and ask us if we wanna give an update. They don't tell us to come and give an update. Uh, other than that, uh, my response is have everybody participate in the process that is going on with the transportation system plan and the master planning. CP four, CP oh four K is not the forum for the expansion.
I would agree, and it seems that the function of CPO four K is intended to be um, helping citizens engage with their city and 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 regional governments. So, I I mean, your conversation may be just a reminder or a questioning, a wondering about that mission.
Right.
And I will, I would say, Mayor, I I um, I enjoy going to CPO four K meetings, I go to almost all of them unless um, I have a uh some other commitment, but generally, I attend all of them. Um, one of the issues with that, however, is that as I attend all of them, and I have volunteered to take questions and, you know, on the fly, engage on conversation when needed to, or correct uh, some conversations, maybe, or discussion that has come out that it needs to be corrected, that the problem with that is that uh I think there's a little bit of an expectation almost set up, if I attend, that I'll speak on behalf of the city. And so I think, I'm happy to attend, but I certainly think your conversation with Kathy um should happen before that, and
Right.
Right, but uh, cuz I I do, I think we need to, we need to make sure that the process is followed, and while I'm always happy to talk with people, uh, it doesn't necessarily mean it's the right uh, the right step.
Right, I mean, to participate and answer a question is one thing. But to give specific report-outs on the expansion is inappropriate.
Right.
So, I'll talk to Kathy about that. And uh, when is, did you guys see something that said there's a
On Monday.
I haven't received anything.
Yeah, and that Oh, sorry, I, it looks like Pat Garrett and Kevin um Barton are uh are on the agenda, you know?
And what's the agenda item for us, what does it say?
I haven't seen that, so.
Like urban growth boundary expansion update.
And that's an agenda item?
Yeah. Ronnie, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure that's what it said, and I mean, I just saw it like this week, and I'm
Yeah, there
Who put this on there?
Yeah, it was two things, it was the uh King City Urban Growth Boundary, and then there was a local law enforcement information, which I think Chief knew about, but I'm not sure.
Okay, and that part of it is fine, because that is part of the community conversation. And they've asked, the police forces have been involved in that. So, but I, if you guys have an email or something that you can forward to me, so I can see specifically that that is an agenda item, and then I will contact Kathy Stahlcamp uh tomorrow.
Well, and I will say, um, if we recall, one of the, there might be needing to have another conversation out there, too, Mayor. Uh, because Gretchen, at the last CPO four K, told the kinda told everyone that she would give a monthly update on the expansion. So I think we need to be clear of, you know, with all of that, so. I'll leave it, I'll leave it with you, Mayor.
Okay, and it sounds like I need to have a conversation with Gretchen as well.
I think so.
Okay, uh, okay, I will make those calls tomorrow.
Mayor, I just sent that to you.
Pardon me?
I just sent that to you.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, what's next? Is that it? Was that the last one on the uh list?
We just need to identify who's our primary. Take Gretchen's spot. Was that gonna be you, Jamie?
I think Jamie said yes.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
And Dave, you would be alternate?
Yeah, I, I
Me and Dave, me and Dave were there all the time.
You guys are always there, anyway. And what did we have, uh, Shawna ask?
I'm not sure what L means, liaison for something.
You said what the L?
What the L mean, I'm, it says L like liaison, what the L does that mean?
That's what I said, what the L is.
Means you're automatically volunteered.
Uh, I don't know that we need an L.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, that's it.
Be, I can be removed from that.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Okay, uh, we've been at it for a while. Uh, we've accomplished quite a bit. This is the first full session with all of us together, and I love it, I love the conversation, and uh, this is the way we operate, is always gonna be good. Uh, so, uh, let's go around the horn now, and Ernie, you wanna go first?
Yeah, I guess I picked the wrong meeting to have like seven pages worth of stuff to go over, so I hope you guys, if you need to take a bathroom break, you might wanna do it now. Go, Ernie. I'll keep it short, I'll I'll keep it short, so uh, T, obviously TVF and R kinda stole a little bit of my thunder with uh uh, we have gone through our first round of COVID nineteen vaccines for the police department. Participated, those who participated were inoculated, uh, I think it was first week of the month. And so our second round will be coming up, I should get the dates tomorrow. Be February for the second shot. Um, just for those who haven't gotten it, uh, the first shot, uh, your arm hurts for about thirty-six hours, that's about it.
Wow.
So, we'll see what the update, update is when it's
Pfizer or the Madera?
I, we, uh, is it Moderno or Modern, whatever that one is, that's the one I, that's the one I got.
Pfizer is two, isn't it?
They're both two.
Are they both two?
Uh, they're both two, they're just spaced differently apart, I think the Pfizer is three weeks apart, and the uh Moderna one is uh four weeks apart, and that's the one that we got for the city. Uh, so that, uh, and then we'll, we'll have our second round coming up here in another week or so. And so that's, that's going good there, um.
So did you say all, all of you have had your first shot?
Those who participated, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and stuff, it's not a mandatory thing, I think we're at eighty-three percent of uh employees that were eligible took the, took the shot. And honestly, that's actually right on par with TVF and R, they're like eighty-five percent.
Okay.
And stuff, so even they didn't have all their employees. It is rather interesting, David, and it's it's a conversation to have another time, but um and so then we move into, uh, we've talked a lot about the events in Tigerd. And uh, you know, and it's something that um, you know, we are everybody in Washington County is a critical incident away from something like that happening. And so one of the things we're finding out is that we are, with the exception of Mobile Field Force, which is Riot Team, that Washington County has its interagency team, we are well prepared. And for for something like that to happen, and even if I I came in and and Courtney and I were kind of man the city hall, just to see if anything was gonna spill over that night, but even if they wanted the help, and I could send the help, we don't have the equipment. And so that's something that Mike and I have gotten into here lately, where we're going to, uh, we already have, I just ordered the equipment to where we can at least have some basic rudimentary control items and protection items for us, uh, to be able to roll into something like that, to be able to offer the help, and and more importantly, when we need to help ourselves. And so all the cities here in South Cities, we are making a monster order for stuff that's ballistic helmets. Uh, you know, batons, the riot shields, just rudimentary gear that's gonna keep the officer safe. And with that being said, you know, there's always been kind of that, brought up, people didn't want people to look militaristic, well, it's ballistic helmet, looks like it's military look, right? So, it's kind of, we have to take one with the other, if we're gonna be able to provide, you know, the help and protection for our officers, so just kind of a little heads up there. And uh, so, I I mean, and and it's expensive, there's, these cities are gonna be, not us, but these cities are gonna be spending mid-five figures in outfitting their people, so it's not cheap stuff. And you saw, I mean, you seen, I mean, downtown Tigerd looks horrible, and and stuff from what happened, so. Um, we're from there, and then obviously, they, you know, the Democratic Headquarters in Portland got destroyed today, too. So, here this afternoon, and uh, so, you know, there's just things like that that are going on. Um, and you know, we're just like said, safety's the utmost thing for for our crews, we're so small, so we we need that. I think I'm probably just gonna leave it.
Do we have best protection?
So, yeah, so what we, we have, everybody uses the outer carrier, so that's the thing that you see that all our gear is draping off of, that's actually a ballistic vest. And so, mine, you know, any anytime you wanna come by the office, you can grab mine, it weighs thirty, like thirty-five pounds, and stuff with all the gear that's hanging off of it. So they're set up there, there obviously is, I I'm not prepared to put people in full catcher's gear, like you see, like a lot of the Portland people do. Um, Officer Kaz Mursky's on Mobile Field Force, and so, you know, you'll see him, if he's out and about, and something like that happens, you may see him with shin guards on or something like that, but it's not something that we're prepared to do, um, stop short of, right? And so, there, just a little bit of the, I just want them to have the rudimentary stuff, the basic ride control stuff, and then the other part is the training. Um, you know, it was, it was one of the things I brought up in our uh chief's meeting, as today, but we're gonna all buy this stuff, and we're all on board with it, we have to train, we have to have this rudimentary, you know, be able to go out and be able to form a, form a skirmish line, be able to control, you know, whatever it's gonna be. And so that's something that'll be coming down the the line pretty soon, too. And so it's, everybody's on, the entire countywide is is on board with it, so hopefully it's something that will happen pretty soon, just because it it hit our, it hit our doorstep, basically.
Right.
And uh, you know, happened to hit Tigerd, and and so it just kind of is a stark reminder of what could happen.
Yeah.
As far as that goes, and I I'll cut it short there, um, obviously it's been a long meeting and stuff, but uh, we'll have some more information.
But you know, so have you uh heard, or are you aware of anything that uh happened down in Salem today? There was that threat of
Uh, you, you know, I I didn't see anything that was uh, you know, as far as, uh, I think I saw one or two things that were um, that kind of came down, but nothing that required action, I think. Uh, the only thing I saw was, I, while we were first meeting, was I got a phone call about the stuff that happened in Portland at the Democratic Headquarters. Portland at the Democratic Headquarters there, and so I was kind of streaming through that real quick, but other than that, I haven't seen anything.
Okay, alright, well, that's good news. That uh, uh. They did a good job of preparing uh for the potential of it down in Salem. And just about in every other uh state capital around the country. So I, I think hopefully that will spell success and that this stuff will start dying down, so. Uh, okay, Ernie, thank you so much.
Welcome.
Mike?
Let's see, so I'll try to make it as quick as possible and as short and brief. So we had our first uh technical advisory meeting uh yesterday. With our master plan. And um, we're trying to get prepared for planning commission meeting for next week. Where we'll do just a brief presentation to the planning commission on where we're sitting with the TSP. The uh master plan and the uh House Bill two thousand one and two thousand and three. So um. Who that, those are all moving ahead. The SAC for the master plan will likely meet in early February. This week has been extremely busy. Short week because of the holidays, so um, and it seems like everyone's now back from. You know, Christmas and New Year's vacation, so they're all trying to get everything through in the first couple of weeks of the year, so. It has been a, a bit of a. It's been a little exhausting last few days, so. Uh, we also have that pathways grant, uh ODOT pathways grant is due by the end of the month. We're trying to get that knocked out as well. Just a lot of little stuff that we're trying to keep up with. We also have to get the RFP out, like we mentioned earlier. With the Community Psyche Grant, we have to get that out, awarded, get the IGA turned back in. Ronnie and I had a presentation with Metro Trails this morning. MTAC had a meeting this morning as well regarding um metro transportation facilities and those sort of things, so. Um, everything's kind of ramping back up, but we're just kind of hanging in there for now.
That's right, it's, it's hard to believe it's almost uh the middle of uh, well, Gander is almost gone already, I mean, it's, it's crazy. But I understand how busy you guys are and I, once again, I appreciate. Everything that you guys are doing and staying on top of all this stuff, there's a lot. And I truly appreciate it.
And everyone has their iPads now, hopefully those are working properly. Um, we're still struggling with. Internet in the building, like wifi internet in the building.
I'm having a really hard time with wifi at my house. I don't know if it's like all around, but it's just crazy.
Yeah, I haven't had any problems. I mean, I know that there's certain peak periods when I think it's a little slow. But uh, everything is working fine. Uh, what carrier do you have?
I think we have uh charter, but it's through the bug um there in the office and so. It basically, it's like an extra layer of security that doesn't necessarily interface with. Your standard internet connections and so it'll kick you off or won't allow you to connect or. It won't allow your camera to connect, but it'll allow you to connect, so. It's constant problems, constant issues, and we end up having to. Either set up our own mobile hotspot with our cell phones and use our data plans. Or we have to leave the office and go home to do a meeting. It, it's just. I think, like, I know uh a couple of our computers have now reached a stage in, in their life where. The last update by Microsoft has now screwed up all the. Functionalities for Zoom or Teams, so we can no longer. Use those and we can no longer use the flash player that's no longer compatible with our system, so. Process of trying to upgrade our computers now.
How do we handle IT at the city, Mike? Do we contract with a company? Is, is it you?
No, it is uh, it's Global Data Works and we've been, we've had our frustrations. So, um, and that's being nice.
Yes, we are being nice. I'm really concerned about what they've been able to deliver. And I don't know what kind of contract we actually have with them. But I think we really seriously need the shot for better service.
I mean, the question is how far is it gonna set us back?
Right, I understand.
What's gonna happen to our entire system? If we, if we change now, so it's.
But we can't be handicapped this way where we can't even uh have internet connection within the business. Having to use your phone as a hotspot and all that kind, that's ridiculous. I mean, I. I'm not saying that toward you guys, I'm just saying that uh what we're being provided isn't working.
And waiting a year for iPads? Waiting a year for the officers to have their MDTs?
Yeah, that's, I'm telling you, I could have had them in a week. And I don't know what the hell they were doing, so oh, I, I didn't mean to sound so. This strikes a chord with me and I, we just need to do better, so. Mike, you have, and Ronnie, you guys have my full support, and we need to do something differently because this is unacceptable.
Oh, I think it takes some planning, figuring out, put our heads together on what it's gonna. It's definitely gonna hurt our operability for a period of time.
Okay, I, we'll, we'll get it figured out, okay? It's gonna be a challenge, but we can't operate our business this way.
That's all I have. I'll shut up.
Okay, no, that, that's what we're here for. Okay, Dave, why don't you go? You have anything?
Well, I have a, actually I have a question on this upcoming. Event for LOC down in the city. That will be virtual at this point, now that's a, a non-cost participation. Are you guys familiar with it?
The one next week?
I think it's the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's no cost.
Do you know what it is?
Yeah, it's um City Day at the Capitol.
Oh, City Day at the Capitol, okay. Is that what you're referring to, Dave?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's, that's a no-cost item.
Okay, well, that's, strikes me as interesting.
Okay, and you're welcome to participate.
Is it virtual?
Oh, I'm sure it is.
Yeah, it is virtual.
Yeah.
Cool, that'll be interesting.
Yeah. Okay.
That's all I'm missing.
Okay, Dave, thank you. Uh, Kate?
Sure, I have a quick question for Mike and Ronnie. Have, have we had anyone apply for planning commission? How many people?
So far, three.
Okay. Cool, uh, next question for everybody. I really want to see us move forward with um. Selecting a youth counselor for our city council, and I'm wondering what conversations have been had, I, I don't. I've heard it mentioned over the past months, but. Where are we on that?
Nowhere, I don't think we've done anything uh really uh at this point.
Have our work session?
Uh, we need to uh discuss that. We would like to do it soon. Uh, because there's other things that we need to really uh work on. Do we need to do, is there anything in our charter that allows us to have a youth counselor? Do we need to go down that path or do we need to do something more simplified? Can we do something more simplified than that?
I think it would be just kind of a honorary sort of thing without, without. Unless we wanted to put some, I don't know that we could put someone on that could vote. They, they couldn't, they couldn't vote.
Think they can. I don't think there's an age restriction on the planning commission seats.
Well, for council, I think you have to be an elector of, of where you live and you, you wouldn't be able to do that until you're eighteen.
But for planning commission?
Oh, no, I'm talking about a city.
Oh, okay.
Like a, like a honorary, you know, representative, planning commission would be great also. That'd be really great.
Yeah. I agree with you, Kate. We need to talk about both of those opportunities. I think planning commission is a really unique opportunity for a young person in our community, especially with the. Uh, expansion process that's going on. And uh, city council is also a great learning opportunity for a high schooler. So uh, let's make sure that that's at the top of our list for a work session. And hopefully we can get a work session in February.
That'd be great. I don't have anything to report just yet. Uh, I could tell you a funny story or something, but it's late, so.
We'll put, I will table that until next meeting.
Okay.
Alright, thank you, Kate. Uh, Micah?
I, I don't have much to report at this point. I was at the uh, the TAC meeting earlier this week and was really uh. Uh enthusiastic about uh where we're going and, and the opportunities there. Uh, we have, uh, as I mentioned earlier, we have our um rating. And presentation of the um applicants for block grants for the CBDG next Thursday. And there's uh some very, very uh worthy uh groups to be part of. I'm also excited for, once we start into our expansion and can find some projects that uh might fit also with that CBDG visit. Vision uh that, that we can take part in it as a city. But uh, not, nothing really new to report at this point. Um, I'll have more after our uh um experience next Thursday with the CBDG.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Shawna?
There's a couple of free trainings coming up with the League of Organ Cities, one that Dave asked about a few minutes ago. If anybody's interested, um, just shoot me an email and I can send you information about them. Uh, like we talked about next, next week, the twenty-eighth, I think it's Wednesday, City Day at the Capitol, which. I plan to attend, I think it sounds really interesting. And then this Friday, there's a, I'm not exactly sure what it's, it's about the lodging tax. And I'm not sure how much that applies to King City, but um, if you're interested in learning more about trainings or anything about the LOC. Just shoot me an email and I'd be happy to share.
Okay, sounds good, thank you, Shawna. Jamie?
Uh, not really much to report, I'll be very brief. Um, Representative Narin and I are continuing. Investigation onto what we can do with the zombie house, that's kind of uh a pet project uh between the two of us. Just simply, we've had enough. Um, and then um, I think that's all I have to report right now.
Okay, well, thank you so much. And let's see, Smart?
Yes, I, I don't have much to report myself. Um, I, I was able to finally get ahold of someone at the. At the Water Board Adversary um team. And I was able to add my name and Jamie, but now I'll call back, I'll get in touch with them to change, to update that to um. Uh, to Kate now. Um, and then now the Edward meeting tomorrow, I plan to attend that. I also tried to attend the LOC meetings that are virtual, like uh Dave and uh. Uh Shawna just talked about, I tried to sign up for those as they come up, uh, and I have availability, so I'm planning to attend the one of next week as well. That's all I have to report today. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Uh, okay, well, I'll close out. Um, really don't have much. Uh, we did. I participated in a Martin Luther King event on Monday. And it was all pre-recorded by uh Tuolton Valley Cable TV. Uh, Kevin Howard of uh, that organization was the producer of it and it's called Awareness in Action. And it is available for you to view on uh YouTube, uh, if you so choose. But we had uh presentations or uh speaking roles from Tigerd. High students, we had Mayor Walt Williams of uh River Grove, Mayor. Uh Jason Snyder of Tigerd. Uh, we all participated in speaking roles. Uh, for that event and it was very well done. There's some others, there's some concerned citizens and this is all part. Of our uh, uh Race Unity uh team that I've been working with is really headed up. By a person by the name of Chris Ragland, who is an employee of the city of Tuolton. And we did our first event in twenty nineteen. And uh, you know, it's, it's an important thing to do. You know, not just talking about honoring Martin Luther King, but it's talking about uh taking the legacy. Of Martin Luther King and applying it to today's situation, today's world. Uh, what are the things that he was uh trying to uh uh instill in the thoughts and hearts of Americans? And are we still uh trying to do the same things that he tried to accomplish, uh which ended up costing him his life? So it was an honor to be a part of that and to participate in it, so. Uh, if you guys get a chance, uh, take a look at it, I think it's worthwhile seeing. And so here we are, twenty twenty-one. Uh, I'm excited to have this team in place. And I'm excited uh when I think about the things that we're going to accomplish. Uh, we have our work cut out for us, there's a lot to do. Uh, but I think we have the right team in place to be able to accomplish everything that we need to. And um, I'm honored to continue as mayor. And I know that Jamie is honored to continue as uh council president. And we're just gonna get as much done as we possibly can. And I've made it clear, you heard a kind of theme that I'm talking about in terms of you guys being involved more. Into things uh that are going on, because there's gonna be a changeover. This is gonna be my last term. And I don't think I'm gonna waiver from that, so uh, I'm dedicated and committed to doing everything we can, but I'm gonna. Pass it on to this younger group of counselors. You guys do realize this is the youngest this council has ever been. It is absolutely, now, we still have two seniors and that's me and Dave. And to put it in perspective, when I got on the council in two thousand eight, I was the youngest counselor. And I was already an old retired dude, so uh, we have the diversity, that is what we wanna see. We have women, we have men, young men, brown-skinned men and seniors. I fit both, so you know, we do, we have a good diverse group and I'm proud of this group. So uh, let's just roll up our sleeves and get as much done as we possibly can, okay? So. With that, we do need a motion.
I moved to adjourn.
At least make it sound like you wanted to talk a little bit longer.
Just one more thing.
Okay, guys. I'm, I'm assuming you all voted to approve.
Thank you, bye, everybody.